Good morning, everyone. We'd like to call to order the meeting of the Deschutes County Board of County Commissioners. It happens to be September 7th, 2022. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do we have any citizen input this morning? See nothing? Stephanie, nothing? We were notified by several residents of the China Hat area this morning in emails that, of course, they had another incident last night. So I have forwarded that information on to Sheriff Nelson, and I'm sure he's very well aware of it. You know, it's, it actually, I believe it's today is the anniversary of the fire two years ago. Remember when the wind was 70 miles an hour? And it took, you know, our, what is it? Lions, Lionsgate Fire over the mountain and 4,000 homes in Oregon burned. So I heard we had, like, red flag warnings. So everyone, please, please be extra careful out there. And let's, let's make it another day. So I'm, it's very frustrating. I know for the neighbors in China Hat what they're dealing with. We do have a consent agenda.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
I will second it.
Any further discussion?
Just a spelling. So item number two, Gregoricus is Mr. Gregoricus, G-R-E-G-O-R-I-C-U-S, instead of gregarious, which is probably a spell check.
Oh, yes, it is.
And his letter is like that also. So it's the agenda and the letter.
Okay. So we wouldn't want to sign those letters. All right. With that, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. So first item on our agenda is National Suicide Prevention. Thank you so much, Jessica, and your wonderful team for joining us this morning. So appreciate you being here today. And happy to, and I'm so happy to share my idea with the hearts. Got to do something.
Good morning. Good morning, Board of County Commissioners and those who are listening in today. The Suicide Prevention Program and Health Promotion and Prevention Team at Deschutes County just want to say thank you to each one of you for taking time out in the agenda to highlight and recognize the, the community need to be aware of suicide prevention and the National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. For the record, my name is Caroline Suter. I'm, my title is Mental Health Promotion Strategist with Deschutes, Deschutes County. With me is Bethany Kushel. She's Deschutes County Suicide Prevention Project Coordinator. And in the audience is our supervisor with Deschutes County, Jessica Jacks. And we're here, the, the three of us comprise the Deschutes County Suicide Prevention Program, and we're here today to just highlight some important community events that are occurring this month for the National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, highlight some important community resources that are available to all of our community members, and just go through a few briefly, some data sets around what we do know related to suicide in our region and in our state. So with that. So our, our program comprises of five key components, and each one of these components are interconnected. Through this interconnection, we're able to leverage our resources so that we can make them go as far as our capacity allows. And one of our primary program goals is to reduce suicide within our community through focusing our efforts in each one of these key components. So just to briefly kind of give a few examples, in postvention, we have some state legislation that mandates a planned, coordinated, collaborative, evidence-based response when there is a suicide death in our community. And the intention is to lower risk within our community and also promote a level of healing for our community members. And through that, we're able to prevent future suicide deaths. Another area that we're able to focus our program in is training. So we're able to go out into the community and provide trainings to professionals and organizations around evidence-based suicide intervention skills training. But we're also able to provide recommendations to our community partners around safe messaging to lower stigma, which in turn helps our community members reaching out for supports. We also provide technical assistance to organizations across our community in both suicide prevention, intervention, and postvention. And we also coordinate and collaborate with our community partners in projects such as the First Step App, which is an application that is on iPhones and Androids for youth in Deschutes County. It's a mental health resource tool and supports youth in understanding mental health wellness and what resources are available to them. So the next few slides, we're just going to take a moment to briefly highlight some data around what we do know within our region and within our state. And per slide, we will also have some resources that we want to highlight to our community members. And we just encourage anyone who's listening in or watching this, this presentation to jot down or put into their phone any or all of the resources that we highlight as they're resources that are available to anyone in our community. So with that. Sorry. There we go. Locally, what we do know in Deschutes County is that historically roughly one person passes by suicide per week. And, and knowing this, one, one resource we want to highlight is our Deschutes County Crisis Line. It's a 24-hour, seven-day-per-week crisis line for our community members. It's free and confidential, and the phone number is 541-322-7500. And just dialing extension nine. What we also know in Deschutes County is that historically roughly about four adolescents in Deschutes County pass by suicide per year. And in 2020, Deschutes County was ranked seventh highest alongside Marion County for youth suicide deaths ages 25 and under. And with knowing this information, we also want to highlight that there's a resource youth line, which is a teen-to-teen pure emotional support line. And that number is 877-968-8491. As far as Oregon goes, some data is that suicide is the second-leading cause of death for youth ages 10 to 24 in Oregon. But in some recent data from 2021, we saw that Oregon is one of seven states that have statistically significantly decreased in suicide rates. But we still want to highlight another national resource, which is the Suicide and Crisis National Lifeline. Anyone can call this number 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and all they have to do is dial 988 or text 988. And finally, before I pass it over to Bethany, we just want to highlight that suicide is a complex public health issue. It's multi-layered when someone is struggling with suicide. And we also recognize that one death is, by suicide, is too many. So with that, we just want to encourage all community members to remain vigilant and support those in need. And our last resource to highlight is that Deschutes County has our Stabilization Center. It's open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and it's located at 633-111 Jamison Street in Bend. So next, we'll pass it over to Bethany. She'll highlight some community events that we have going on this month.
Great. Thank you, Caroline. And again, thank you for having us here today to recognize September is National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. For the record, my name is Bethany Kushel. And let's take a brief moment to overview the events that will be provided to our community this month. So our first event will be Build Resiliency Through Mindfulness. And this will be occurring tonight at 6:00 PM at the downtown Bend Library. This is a free, hour-long, family-friendly event that focuses on building resiliency through mindfulness. And so it'll be a great event for all families to join us this evening. Our next event will be the Historical Candlelight Vigil, and this event will take place tomorrow night, Thursday, September 8th, from 7:00 to 8:00 PM at the front lawn of the Ben Lepine School's Educational Center. So that'll be in downtown Bend. This event is a free public event that includes live music, poetry, speakers, and the lighting of candles in remembrance. And this year, we're able to offer this event in both English and Spanish. Our next event will be on Saturday, September 10th, starting at 11:00 AM at the new Alpenglow Park in Bend. And that is the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention Out of Work, Out of Darkness Walk. And this event is supported by our alliance, Central Oregon Suicide Prevention Alliance. And it is a community event to support the fight to stop suicide. Lastly, on September 19th, at 5:30 PM at the downtown Public Library in Bend, we will be providing a question, persuade, refer, or also known as a QPR training. This free hour-and-a-half training teaches participants to recognize the warning signs that someone might be thinking about suicide, ask directly if someone is thinking about suicide, and then it goes on to, to help support a person, persuade someone to get help, and to help them access the appropriate resources. There will be a lot of community resources available at this event, and it is a free event, open to the public, for anyone ages 18 and older. As we wrap up, we just really want to mention the gratitude that we have for all of our community partners that are involved in suicide prevention with us. And we feel honored to be able to work with such champions. We also want to take a moment to shine a light on the COSPA Outreach Group. So Central Oregon Suicide Prevention Alliance has an outreach group that's instrumental in planning the events for this month. We couldn't have these events to bring awareness to suicide prevention if it wasn't for this group of amazing people. And we are lucky to have one of our members here today. We have Carol here with us, and so we just want to take a moment to recognize her and thank her very, very much for all that she does.
Thank you for joining us, Carol. There you go.
So again, thank you so much. Thank you for your willingness to highlight this important health matter in our community. If anyone would like to reach out to learn more about our program or our events or to inquire about resources, here's our contact information. And please feel free to reach out.
Thank you so very much for joining us. And actually, a proclamation is attached to our packet. But according to our motion, nothing was applicable. So I'm wondering, should we do that proclamation?
You certainly can.
Yeah, I, I do think it's important, especially when you're saying an average of one person a week?
Historically, yes.
Historically, though the numbers have gone down recently.
Yeah.
But, you know, since I'm well aware of several people that have, you know, it's something that, we need to address it. So did you see the proclamation then?
Yes, I found the proclamation. Thank you very much for the efforts that you're doing. It's, it's important just to take a moment and, you know, get some brain space on it for anybody and everybody, you know, perceiving what's going on around you. If somebody's struggling, somebody needs a little outreach. You know, thank you very much for coordinating these events, offering training, offering resources for people that just may be even questioning or looking out for each other is going to be really important.
Thank you for your prevention awareness efforts. I, I hope that there are a lot of people who are engaged this month and participating in these events and helping to raise awareness in our community. This is, this is the prevention awareness raising moment. So I don't want to get in, you know, I always want to talk about policy and operations and get down in the weeds about what are we doing? But at a later point, I would love to unpack a little bit, unpack those numbers, understand what is actually helping. You know, you showed us this diagram with these five types of interventions and, and, you know, it would be great to get a better understanding of which of those pieces is, is, is most critical or we're most lacking in capacity right now. If, if they're all important in a, you know, in a kind of constellation of work, then, you know, where, where are the gaps? Where's the, where's the shortfalls? And where can we do more to address this incredibly important community issue?
Okay. Commissioner Chang, do you want to read the first three whereses? And then Commissioner DeBonne, if you read the next, the next for that page, and then I'll read the last page?
Sure.
Please.
A proclamation recognizing September as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Whereas in the United States, one person dies by suicide every 11 minutes, with over 46,000 deaths every year in our country. Whereas in Deschutes County, approximately one person dies by suicide each week, and a rate of roughly four adolescents die by suicide per year. In Oregon, for youth ages 10 to 24, suicide is the second-leading cause of death. Each person's death by suicide affects at least 135 other people, and 50% of the US population has known someone who has lost their life to suicide. Friends and family are forever, and family members are forever changed by this loss. Whereas many of the people who have died by suicide never receive effective behavioral health services for many reasons, including the stigma of using behavioral health treatment and the stigma associated with losing a loved one to suicide.
Whereas too many Deschutes County residents die by suicide each year. And whereas Deschutes County is dedicated to partnering with local behavioral health and healthcare organizations, state and local agencies, military, veterans organizations, educational institutions, and the community at large to reduce the frequency of suicide attempts and deaths and the pain for those affected by suicide deaths through recognizing suicide as a significant public health issue in Deschutes County and declaring suicide prevention a countywide priority, supporting accessible behavioral health services for all in our county, and helping to de-stigmatize help-seeking behaviors.
Number four, acknowledging that everyone plays a role in helping to prevent suicide. And number five, encouraging initiatives known to be effective at preventing suicide attempts and death. Now therefore be it resolved that the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners do hereby designate the month of September 2022 and each year thereafter as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Deschutes County and urge Deschutes County residents to learn how they can help because suicide prevention is everyone's business. Dated the September 7th, well, actually, it would be dated today, the 9th of September 2022 by the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners. So could we have a, a motion?
According to my phone, it is the 7th.
Oh, it is the 7th. I'm thinking it's the 9th.
I had to check it.
I know. What day is it? I, I think I missed yesterday.
I know. There you go.
I know I did. Okay. So the 7th.
Move adoption of the Proclamation for National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month.
And I will second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. So thank you so much for joining us today.
Caroline and Bethany, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you, Jessica. And I will let you know when I hear from JR with the Parks. And yes, and I would love some hearts on those signs. Something so that people will see the signs.
May I make one brief statement?
Yes.
A, I've called central Oregon home for 72 years, and I've been active on the school response team for 30 years. And it was there that I realized how much suicide is impacting our children. And so I've devoted my retirement to doing the most I can for suicide prevention. I would like to thank the Commissioners for keeping our ship afloat and headed the right direction. I would like to commend Jessica Jacks for having brought COSPA to a very active and effective unit. And I'd like to acknowledge both Bethany and Caroline for their really powerful activities. They are two awesome ladies, as is Jessica. Thank you much.
Thank you. And would you identify yourself for the record?
Oh, my name is Carol Palmer.
Okay, thank you, Carol.
I'm seeing a photo opportunity here with the nice flowers and everything. You want to take a moment and do that, Chair?
Sure.
And thank you so much for your commitment.
But I feel like who's getting the flowers? I mean, you are the people that should be getting the flowers. Yeah.
Let's get the team up just for a quick photo, too.
Okay. Why not?
Yes, of course. We should have brought flowers.
Take it, take it with yours?
There we go.
Thank you, guys. I know, it can't be.
Great. Okay. One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Okay, Jessica. On to the heart. And I'll let you know what JR says.
Okay.
You can maybe send me a text or whatever you'd like.
I'm giving so much for your retirement.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay. But I'm making the gavel to him.
Okay.
He's not coming up for a while.
All right.
Yeah, today. So now he's not coming up, so I have to remember it. I have to, he's not coming till midnight. Okay, so now it's time for our public hearing.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Tarek Rawlings. I'm an associate planner with the Community Development Department. And you should have a script in front of you, Chair Dare. And I gave a script to the other Commissioners as well just for the kind of brief moments near the end that you'll chime in. And there's an area map there as well, just to kind of orient you to the location of these properties. But I'll just let you take it away, Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Tarek. This is the time and place set for a hearing regarding file number 247-21-000881-PA-882ZC, a request for a comprehensive plan amendment to change the designation of the subject properties from agricultural to rural industrial and a corresponding zone change to rezone the property, subject properties from exclusive farm use to rural industrial. The original application includes a grant, a request for a Goal 14 exception as an alternative argument, if determined to be necessary, for approval of the plan amendment zone change. Staff will outline the hearing procedure that will be followed. So, Tarek.
Thank you, Commissioner Dare. I'm going to share my screen really briefly here and just kind of go through some of the procedures. So, oop, and just as you had mentioned today, the, we'll go over the file numbers here in a little bit, but it's a plan amendment zone change from EFU to rural industrial and agricultural to rural industrial. The hearings body, the Board of County Commissioners in this case, will take testimony and receive written evidence concerning a quasi-judicial application requesting approval of a plan amendment and zone change for properties encompassing approximately 19.12 acres. The applicant in this case, LBNW LLC, is requesting approval to rezone and redesignate the subject properties from agriculture or ag to an exclusive farm use, EFU, to rural industrial. The, all testimony shall be directed to the hearings body. And at the conclusion of this hearing, the hearings body will deliberate towards a decision or continue the hearing or deliberations to a date and time certain. The hearing will proceed as follows. Staff will explain Zoom, telephone, and in-person participation. Staff will then provide a brief report regarding the application and quasi-judicial process. The applicant will then present its testimony and evidence. Then any other interested parties or agencies will then present testimony or evidence. The applicant, as the party bearing the burden of proof, will then be afforded an opportunity to present rebuttal testimony. And then, if requested by the hearings body, staff will provide closing comments. And as a note, at the Board's August 8th work session, the Board agreed upon set time limits for today's testimony. And the time limits include three minutes for the general public and 10 minutes for agencies. The, to comply with House Bill 2560, this is a hybrid meeting with both remote and in-person participation. For in-person participants during public testimony, please raise your hand if you'd like to testify. State your first and last name and your mailing address for the record. This is also being conducted via Zoom. The Zoom information has been posted to the county's public hearing notices page as well as a project-specific website with a notice of public hearing dated August 22nd. Zoom participants are either attendees or panelists. Attendees can view panelists but are not shown on video or have audio access until they're promoted to panelists. Panelists are on video and they have control of their audio. Some important tools to be aware of are the mute button to the left, the stop video button next to that button, and the raise hand button, which is especially important if you'd like to testify. For phone participants, you'll push star six in order to mute or unmute. And you'll also push star nine in order to raise your hand. At the time of public hearing, raise your hand using the button or, excuse me, using the raise hand button or by pressing star nine. Elevated attendees will become panelists and their audio will become unmuted. They'll provide testimony. They'll be then returned to attendee status with their audio again muted. And then the next person will be selected, and the process will repeat until all those participating by computer have testified. Then we'll repeat the process for those participating by phone. I do want to note that this is mostly for computer testify, or those joining us via computer, is that I, the county's internet connection may get interrupted. If so, then we'll attempt to get back online as soon as possible. If this happens, please give us a couple of minutes to reactivate the public hearing before you attempt to link or call back in. And if your own connection gets interrupted, please attempt to join back using the same link or phone number you used initially. The hearing procedure and the order of testimony, which is again just a reminder of the order of this morning's testimony, will begin with the applicant, which is around 30 minutes. Then we will proceed to others wishing to provide testimony. Again, that's a three-minute time limit for the general public and 10 minutes for agencies. We'll move through in-person testimony first and then remote testimony via Zoom and phone. And then lastly, the applicant will have an opportunity for rebuttal testimony for about 10 minutes. It's our responsibility as staff and the Chair to conduct an orderly hearing. As part of that, we will be reminding you of any time limits that come up and do not. As part of that, we will be reminding you of any time limits that come up and do ask that those providing testimony are respectful of these time limits as well as in regard to their oral testimony this afternoon. In addition to oral testimony, if anyone has written testimony to submit, please hand that to staff. If you are in person, please submit your written testimony to staff prior to beginning your testimony. If you are participating remotely, you can submit your written testimony via email. My email address is on the screen. Please keep in mind that if your submittal is more than 20 pages in length, includes color figures, or includes documents which should be printed larger than eight and a half by 11 inch size, then you'll need to submit the testimony both electronically and as a hard copy. At this time, I'm going to ask if there are any objections to the format of the hearing. If yes, please raise your hand if you are in person or use the raise hand function if you are attending remotely.
Okay, there are no raised hands, any raised hands? Okay. Thank you, Stephanie.
All right. And then just as a note, a full written version of the hearing procedures is on the table at the side of the room there. And Commissioner Dare, I will now return to the script and note that the Commissioners must now disclose any ex parte contacts, prior hearing observations, biases, or conflicts of interest, and I'm going to stop sharing my screen for that portion.
Does any Commissioner have anything to disclose? And if so, please state the nature of same and whether you can proceed.
I have none.
I have nothing to disclose and I can proceed.
Yes, I have nothing to disclose and please proceed. Okay, so we disclosed, um, nope, no conflict. So, does any party wish to challenge any Commissioner, member of the hearings body based on ex parte contacts, biases, or conflicts? I don't, is there anything raised? Okay. As no challenges are presented prior to opening the hearing, does anyone have any procedural objections to the public hearing? Do we see any procedural? Seeing none. The hearing is now open. Staff will proceed with a brief staff report.
Thank you very much, Chair Dare. I'm going to share my screen again here and we will now move into the staff report portion of the presentation. So just as we had briefly mentioned at the beginning of the public hearing today, is a public hearing for a plan amendment zone change for a, the plan designation from agricultural to rural industrial and the zone from exclusive farm use to rural industrial. The applicant in this case is LBNW LLC and the file numbers are 247-21-000881-P-A and The location of the properties, there are three properties comprising 19.12 acres. They're all located within township range sections 16, 12, 23. They're about halfway between the Tumalo Junction and the kind of gift road exit along Highway 97. They are, the largest is 15.06 acres in size. It's under an ownership of the last name Johnson and then the other two properties, which are three acres and a little over one acre in size, are under ownership of the applicant. And these are the three that would be the subject of the plan amendment zone change here today. The request, like we said, is the plan amendment from agricultural to rural industrial and the corresponding zone change from exclusive farm use to rural industrial. The applicant included a traffic study which quantified traffic impacts and potential just traffic analysis related to the proposal. There was no goal three exception proposed, which was related to a soil study submitted and verified by the Department of Land Conservation and Development showing that the property is not agricultural soil or productive soil for agriculture. The original application, as the Chair had noted, included a goal 14 exception as an alternative argument if deemed necessary for the approval. This process as a quasi judicial process requires two public hearings. The first initial public hearing before a hearings officer was on April 26th of this year. There was a lengthy open record period and there was eventually a recommendation of approval submitted or issued by that hearings officer on July 12th of this year, so just a couple of months ago. So that now we're in the second public hearing of that quasi judicial process and we'll be moving into deliberations or next steps after this public hearing. So the hearings officer recommend, or the hearing itself was held on April 26th. There was one verbal public comment that was provided via oral testimony from Central Oregon Land Watch. They pretty much centered around these five issue areas on your screen here. The potential loss of agricultural land, since these are all currently zoned exclusive farm use, the compatibility of this proposal with surrounding properties, the validity of the Order One Soil Survey that was included with the proposal, the proposal's compliance with Oregon statewide planning goals three, five, 12, and 14, and the need for goal exceptions for those goals. And then transportation and emergency access impacts were kind of the main other issue area. The applicant's team also provided oral testimony and again, this resulted in a recommendation of approval issued on July 12th. One note about this recommendation of approval is it does include a condition of approval related to Division 12, Goal 12, transportation planning compliance. It's a trip cap, which is commonly, this is commonly referred to as a trip cap condition of approval, essentially saying that the maximum development on these three properties that's subject of this proposal would have, could produce no more than 32 PM peak hour trips or 279 daily trips. This condition of approval itself, oops, excuse me, was reviewed and approved by ODOT, the county senior transportation planner, and the applicant's team, but was opposed by Central Oregon Land Watch during the, kind of during the course of this review. The four options for next steps and moving forward, one would be to continue the hearing to a date and time certain. Second would be to close the oral portion of the hearing and leave the written record open to a date and time certain. Close the hearing and commence deliberations, or close the hearing and schedule deliberations for a date and time to be determined. These are some tentative, this is a very standard 21-day 777 open record period with some tentative dates there, if that was the way that the Board would like to go. Totally open to any other dates or any other treatment of the potential written record period that you might have in mind. And with that, I, just as a reminder, these open record periods, if you do have any kind of submittal, if there is any open record period, then kind of same spiel as before, if there's any kind of submittal that's written or otherwise that is over 20 pages in length, has larger than standard size, eight and a half by 11 paper, color figures, or anything like that, then you'll need to also submit a physical copy. You're also welcome to email, anyone's welcome to email me any kind of materials. I will note that in terms of record additions or things that have happened since drafting this presentation and uploading it, we've had two comments that were people that had previously commented during the hearings officer portion that are essentially just reiterating their, one person was opposed, one person was in support. They were, one is a neighboring property owner, the other's was just involved as a supporter in the previous process. And then the larger one was that just about an hour prior to this meeting, we got a large submittal from Central Oregon Land Watch for written materials mostly. I hadn't had a chance to dive into those, but those are kind of the three main updates since uploading these materials for you. And again, if there are, we will talk about open record period, but there is a 4:00 PM deadline on those dates for any kind of submittal deadlines. So just please keep that in mind. And I'm available for any questions you might have, Commissioners. I'm going to stop sharing my screen just for the time being.
Thank you, Tarek, for that.
Certainly.
So... So is it, are there any questions?
Go ahead.
Okay.
I have questions, but...
All right. So do we, should we hear from the applicant at this time then?
Yeah, if you don't have questions for staff, I think that'd be the appropriate time, yeah.
If you do have questions, I was just letting you go first.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
One of the things I better, I want to better understand is the adjacent, the adjacent land holdings.
Sure.
I see there's a piece of state parkland, you know, to the west. It looks like it may be, you know, rural residential or MUA zones.
Correct. Rural residential to the west, exactly, in a subdivision bordering it to the west.
And then what is going on on the east side?
Sure. So good question. The, so the east side is technically a canal that borders it, but then just across the canal are two sort of larger exclusive farm use zone properties and both of those properties, the noteworthy qualities of them are that they are in farm to farm tax deferral currently. They look to be engaged in hobby farm uses. I'm not sure exactly the scope of the farm use out there, but they appear to have irrigation and water rights out there in irrigated portions of the land and they, I can confirm that they both are receiving farm tax deferral. That's Tax Lot 300 kind of further to the north and Tax Lot 306, just bordering that to the south. They make up pretty much the eastern side of that canal over there. And then just to your point on the park property, it's Oregon State Park owned property, OPRD, to the south of Tax Lot 305. It's essentially, it's a, it corresponds to like an open, open space and conservation zone. It's not, it's not really a built-out park, but it's open space, yeah.
Not currently being used as a park.
Correct, yeah. And that, it has, it has not a farm deferral tax status, but like a municipal exempt status because of its park designation, so. Those are the three kind of noteworthy surrounding properties I'd point out to you.
Yeah. And the, do any of these three parcels have irrigation rights?
When I, they, during the hearings officer proceeding, I noted in my staff report that two of them did, but I, just checking recently, they, they appear to not have them anymore, so I wonder if there was work done. That might be a question for the applicant, but if there was something done to more formally remove the water rights from that property, it looked, I did a quick kind of check of the assessor's report yesterday and I didn't see any signs of the water rights any longer, so that would be a different update since the hearings officer process, yep. But they did, they did earlier in the year, I would say, but...
I guess, kind of a broader question, there was an assertion that there's a need for industrial land in the community. I am, I am certainly aware that there is a need for large lot industrial parcels in the region, but is, does CDD have any information about the availability of industrial land and particularly, you know, the kind of industrial uses that this, this site might support and, you know, how scarce that is?
Sure. I think, so this is separate from the, kind of the large lot needs analysis, I believe, and just in terms of the character and just the scope of this property, I think, in terms of size. But the one key element I would note is there, there isn't a specific use tied to this proposal yet. While it's within the family of what would be allowed in the rural industrial zone, there's not actually a key, there's been mention of certain things to, for instance, to try to quantify traffic impacts, so they've sometimes used a mini storage facility as this model for what traffic impacts might be, but again, that's something that would be allowed in the rural industrial zone. I don't think there's analysis per each use determining which one has a need for it. I don't even think necessarily the large lot industrial analysis went into which exact uses might be the most needed, but certainly the, I think that there's limited industrial zoned land in the county for, certainly, but it's a, I don't know if that paints the need in its own right. It might be more about the use like you're kind of talking about as well, so I don't know if that helps answer your question.
It does, but I, you know, I guess I'm trying to, I'm, what I'm trying to understand is, my perception is, again, that the acute need is for a large lot. And if that is the need that is most frequently raised or, you know, kind of focused on in the community, then it would suggest to me that smaller lot industrial...
That this is separate from that.
Is, you know, is not part of, you know, is not part of that great need.
Sure. I would agree. I think the county's analysis has only pointed at large lot industrial as kind of what, where we focused, any kind of perception of need for that industrial use or land, exactly.
And I guess one other question I have, which I can wait for the applicant, is very frequently when we see requests or applications for a plan amendment and zone changes, it's from EFU to rural residential. And I'm just curious, that's a, that would be a substantially less intensive use of this land in, I believe, than switching to rural industrial and I would have a lot less impacts on like the character of the area, the surrounding, the surrounding, you know, would be more consistent with surrounding land uses, would have smaller traffic impacts and, you know, so I'll, you know, perhaps when the applicant comes up, I'd like to ask about whether there was consideration of seeking a change to RR10 or something like that instead.
Certainly, yeah. Yeah, it sounds like a great question for the applicant. Yeah, any other questions for staff at this time?
Any question?
No. No, I don't believe so. So we have 30 minutes allocated?
Yeah, I believe so. That was the time limit for the applicant, yep.
30 or 20?
It's the, technically the Board's discretion, so however we'd like to go about scheduling it.
Right.
Oh, sure, yeah. Absolutely.
Actually, it is 30. If you want, all 30?
30, okay. Try to be fast.
Do we have a timer today that works? Has our technology improved?
I'm just putting this location map back up for the applicant, just reference of the location in acre.
Thanks, Tarek, that helps.
Just let me know if you need me to take it down, too, or anything.
We're just going to leave it, thank you. Appreciate it.
We'll start at the same time.
All right. Ready? Good morning Commissioners. For the record, Ken Katzroff, Schwab Williams &amp; White here for the applicant. I will try not to take 30 minutes. I have some ground to cover and I'm happy to answer additional questions, but as of right now, my overarching comments are going to be this. Hearings officer wrote a very robust recommendation. It was over 100 pages long. She covered a whole multitude of issues very well and my comments are basically adopt her decision with a couple of additional findings to harmonize it with some recent county other decisions, mainly the Aseti decision. We, so 30,000 foot level, hearings officer did a really great job and we're asking the Board to affirm that decision with some additional harmonization. Now, getting into first Commissioner Chang's question about whether or not we considered looking at rural residential use. The answer to that is no. The reason that we didn't is because of really some practical concerns. When I do land use in my practice, the first thing I always look at are what are the practical concerns with the property or any particular use. In this case, as you can see on the map up here, the property is kind of a very odd shape. It's always been used, particularly the parcels on the southern end for a industrial type use. As mentioned in the hearings officer decision, there's a, there's a history of about 40-plus years that we have documented of this property being used as an industrial piece of land, as a farm equipment rental, diesel mechanic, all those sorts of things that are required to have productive farm use in the county. And unfortunately, at some point in time, I'm just going to lay it all out on the table, at some point in time, that use was stopped for a long enough period of time that a non-conforming use would no longer qualify. Okay? So the problem with that for us is, well, you know, you need farm use, you need farm equipment, you need small lot industrial as well in order to service actual tractors and farm uses in the county. And so we thought, hmm, let's come in and redesignate the property in a way that has always been used in Deschutes County, which is as rural industrial. And so we came in and said, hey, you know, there is what we think is considered under law a mapping error in which the broad stroke NRCS data showed that this was in theory farm soils. And our soil specific, our soil study, that is very specific Order One study on this property, shows it is not farm soils. In fact, it's really bad. Most of the property is something like 81% Class VII and VIIIs.
You defined Order One Soil Study just in reference to what would Order Two be?
In terms of a magnifying glass, I guess. When you have an Order Three study, which is what the NRCS did, it's this big broad stroke, oftentimes they just did aerial photographs and said, hey, this looks like it's in farm use. And it would make sense that this property looked like it was in farm use because there's a giant canal running through it or running on one side of it. And then what our soil scientist did is he came in and he did, as detailed in the study, a lot of test pits, a lot of analysis, looked at the actual soil characteristics, how much water it can hold, those sorts of things, and did a more targeted study, Order One. So instead of being up here or even Order Two down here, we went really at a granular level, which is what's required under the law in order to have a non-agricultural level, which is what's required under the law in order to have a non-agricultural lands determination. Of note, that study was accepted by DLCD and acknowledged. And basically what DLCD does is they don't come in and say, hey, you know, this isn't agricultural land. What they say is you followed the rules when you did your study. You applied all of the NRCS data, you applied the state rules, and they're not stamping it saying we necessarily agree with you, but they're saying in terms of your analysis, when you determine that it is non-agricultural soils, as far as the science goes, as far as the rule goes, you got it right. Right? This is important because Central Oregon Land Watch today has raised an issue that the canal should not be included in that soils analysis. And that's not true. That issue has come up previously. Essentially, the NRCS and the state rules essentially say if you have an infrastructure piece like a canal that was in place before, I think 1994, although don't quote me on that necessarily, and I think our soils analysis guy is on, but he was out of town this weekend or this week, so he should be online and he'll testify here shortly. But essentially what that says is it's determined, there is a specific classification of it. In this case, it's determined to be Class VIII, and that's reflected in the soils analysis. So that was all done correctly, and it was acknowledged by DLCD. Okay?
One question on that. So the canal is part of this parcel? The right-of-way underlying it is part of this parcel?
Yes, sir.
So basically, you're subtracting that as non-valuable land?
No, it still gets included, but as not farmland, essentially, it's not farm soils, right? Which makes sense because you have a federal right-of-way canal granted under the CARE Act and the Right-of-Way Act of 18... Oh, my gosh, I'm going to forget, 81, 91, I can't remember. And as Commissioners well know, irrigation district easements are, like railway easements, they require an act of Congress to vacate and use for personal property. So we still own the dirt, which makes sense that it's still considered in the soil analysis. But when it comes to whether or not you did that analysis correctly, our soil scientist did, and DLCD accepted that. So I wanted to address that issue.
Can you break down how much of the land area in discussion here is canal right-of-way or canal?
In... No, because we don't have specific measurements as to where the toe of the canal is, and that's how it's all measured under the Right-of-Way Act. What the soil scientist...
Give us an estimate.
Yeah. What the soil scientist estimated was it was about 1.3 acres. Okay? And so what Central Oregon Land Watch is arguing is that you shouldn't count that, and therefore, one of the pieces of property is close to being, or may be, considered good enough soils, but under the law, you still count the canal and that area, and it's clearly not. Does that make sense?
I'm following you. It doesn't make sense, but I'm following you.
Well, I think from a practical concern, it makes sense that you can't farm a canal that you don't have the right essentially to use.
Right. So when you're asking about, you know, whether a piece of land is, has agricultural potential or not, you shouldn't count the land that is the canal.
Well, and not to necessarily be combative, but what NRCS and the state has said is that you do count that. You do count infrastructure that is still on your property. Okay? And so you do count that. Whether or not that, from a perspective of me owning a property, makes sense, I don't know. But under the law and the considerations that'll be before Luba and the Court of Appeals have taken there, is that it's counted.
I follow your legal interpretation.
Okay, great. And Mr. Kitzrow, if he in fact was able to make it on, could you raise your hand so I know, and then we could hopefully bring him in in a minute? I wanted to address a couple of other pieces. Again, as noted in this map, it's a very odd-shaped property. You are bounded on the western side completely by a rural residential neighborhood, and there's been testimony and support of the project. To your point, on the other side of the canal, there is EFU land with also significant code enforcement history on it, so this has always kind of been a problem area of the county, as I think is indicated below. What else do I want to hit? I think that when it comes to irrigation rights, there were two properties, two pieces of this that had irrigation rights. But this, like some of the other applications that at least I'm working on right now in the county, kind of indicates a policy question before this board, and it's something that I think the Hearings Officer did a great job of, which she acknowledged that it's not good policy to water rocks. If you don't have agricultural land, you can't have productive soils, why are we using precious water resources in order to water rocks? And that's consistent with this board's entire line of the ACETI case also, where it's not an accepted farm practice to water bad soils. And so although it's an indication under the state law factors of whether or not something should qualify as agricultural land, in this case, the soils analysis and the policy question before the board potentially, is that it just doesn't make sense to waste water on rocks. Okay? So I just wanted to make that argument.
Can I ask, so you mentioned 40 years of quasi-industrial use, you know, prior to this time. What was being done with the water right during those 40 years?
Good question. I don't really have an answer for you. Obviously, at some point in time, the water was continued to be put in beneficial... Wow, I cannot talk. Beneficial use. But also, we do know on this record that there were substantial portions of time, including over the last five years, where the water was leased back into stream or transferred off of the land by COID for other properties. So other actual farmland.
Was the property receiving farm tax deferral during those periods?
I don't believe so, no. Let me... I will check on that and respond to that better in rebuttal. Okay?
Because I guess the question, I mean, broad scale, you look around Deschutes County, there is... There's not a lot of land that has great soil. There's areas that have okay soil, and there's areas that have water rights. And we have seen incredibly ingenuative farmers who have figured out ways to do productive agriculture on not great soil in a lot of places. Poor soils is not a static, you know, is not a static destiny, you know? Soil amendment is a real thing, and when we look at properties of this size in particular, I mean, when we're looking at hundreds, you know, 700 acres or something like that, you know, the idea of amending 700 acres of soil, that's pretty daunting. But when you're looking at a property like this, you know, you could imagine if the county's compost operation at our landfill was adequately sized to process all of the organic waste that we're producing in our community, that you would actually have opportunities to amend, you know, 10, 15, 20-acre piece of land that had water rights. You know, if someday we were able to properly dispose of some of the biomass produced by hazardous fuels reduction treatments in our community, we'd be producing a lot of biochar. And that's another incredible soil amendment that could be added to local soils to completely change the production opportunities on a piece of land. So I guess, you know, at a moment where you have marginal soils, but you have water rights, you can either make the choice to kind of try to actively move the land in an agricultural direction, or you can make the choice to try to strip the water rights away from that land to, you know, to foreclose on agricultural opportunities. And I'm concerned that that might be, you know, what has just occurred with this piece of property.
So I'll respond in a couple of different ways. The first I would say is that when you come and you look at what the actual test is under agricultural land and Goal III, what you're talking about amending soils and somehow improving them is directly accounted for in that rule. It says what are the other technological and whatnot impacts that you could do in order to bring the property up to farm status? And maybe one day in Deschutes County, years from now, the county will be able to provide financing for somebody to bring in additional soils. But when it comes down to right now, the capacity of the soil here, even with irrigation, is different than other properties in Deschutes County. And the soil study covers that. It is not productive, and it does not get better with irrigation water. So the only way to make this property potentially even have some viable farm use on it would be to bring in, I don't even know how many cubic yards of soil, and it would be cost prohibitive to do so. And so I think that those goals can be lauded, but if we're actually looking at what the state rule requires and how this law is actually implemented on the ground, that is a significant cost that there really isn't a way to measure right now, nor is it available to the applicant. You know, maybe in a few decades, if and when it is, that'd be great. But when we look at how this property is different than other areas of Deschutes County, the soil is so bad that even with irrigation, it doesn't get better. So that's all I can say to that. There is not the availability to bring in better soil at this particular point in time, and even if it were, it would be very expensive in order to meet the state rule and definition of farm use, which is to do it for profit, or for the primary purpose of obtaining a profit in money. So I certainly agree that there are a lot of folks in Deschutes County who have used very high levels of ingenuity, but what we're looking at in this particular proposal is acknowledging that a piece of land does not qualify for agricultural land, has always been used for something else, and should therefore really have a practical consideration as well, as opposed to being forced to sit on a piece of property that's never been productive, and at least in the near term, cannot be made productive whether or not there's additional irrigation rights available. So that's how I would respond to that question. I will say I agree with you. I think ingenuity in farming is something that Deschutes County is going to have to grapple with for the next 50 or 100 years. But when it comes down to what the law is today and what the practical concerns are for a property like this one, I think it cuts the other way.
I don't necessarily agree. I mean, there are certain kinds of agricultural uses, trying to amend 19 entire acres of soil is a big project. But, I mean, you know, some of our local food producers here in Deschutes County, you know, are concentrating their work on, you know, one acre, two acres, you know, producing phenomenal amounts of local fruits and vegetables within very limited areas. And improving soil within those areas is very feasible, and having EFU-zoned land with water rights is an incredible opportunity for people who are interested in getting into agriculture, which we are seeing less and less of. I mean, those opportunities for people who are, you know, beginning farmers or people who are trying to establish a new farm, there are very limited opportunities in this community. So I don't agree with your analysis.
The only other thing I wanted to discuss before Central Oregon Land Watch comes up, I assume, to testify, is they're arguing that the property is already in a farm use because of the canal, and they're incorrect on that. There is a part of the state law that says that if you have a water impoundment in common ownership of another property in farm use, that means farming for the primary purpose of obtaining a profit, that may be considered farm use for the purposes of the EFU statute. We simply disagree with that, specifically because our entire application is that this isn't farm use or farm property. If Mr. Kitzrow is on, I'm not clear if he is or not.
You don't see him, Stephanie?
Then I don't have anything else to say unless the board has additional questions at this point in time.
No questions?
Okay.
All right, I will step back.
All right. So what type of time did we use then?
18 minutes.
Okay. Thank you for that. All right. So now we'll open for testimony. According for general public, it's three minutes. We don't have the timer anymore that we can show? Did that bite the dust?
At this point, I don't think we do until we have our new executive assistant on board here in pretty short order.
Okay, all right, good. All right. So is there someone that has filled out a blue form that wants to speak at this moment? Okay. Thank you. Do we have blue forms over there?
We do, in the little box on the end. You can fill one out when you're...
When you're finished.
Yeah. I'll fill one out when I'm done, thanks.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Derrick Commissioners. My name's Rory Isbell. I'm a staff attorney with Central Oregon Land Watch. I have written testimony for you today that I have emailed to Tarek, and I printed a hard copy for him as well. And I have some copies of not all the exhibits, but just our contacts that I can hand you right now.
Okay. Thanks.
I have one for the applicant as well. Yeah, so I'm Rory. I'm with Central Oregon Land Watch. For the record, our address is 2843 Northwest Lowlo Drive, Suite 200, Bend, 97703. Thank you for hearing testimony on this application this morning. As you've heard, this application proposes an amendment to the county's comprehensive plan to redesignate 19 acres of agricultural land for rural industrial uses. All plan amendments have to comply with the 19 statewide land use planning goals. You know, your existing plan is deemed in compliance, but when you amend the plan, you have to show compliance with those state goals. So that's really kind of the legal framework for why we're here today and why Land Watch is opposed to this application, because we don't think it meets those criteria contained in the 19 goals and also in the county's existing comprehensive plan. I want to start talking about transportation impacts and transportation safety. This property is immediately adjacent to Highway 97, the speed limit's 65 miles an hour right there. And as you probably know, ODOT has worked in recent years to make this stretch of highway more safe because of the high prevalence of crashes on this stretch of highway. And they've identified access points, just like the one on this property, where to ride-in, ride-out directly into a travel lane as the primary source of danger to motorists on this stretch of highway. This is important here because the county has a criteria in its code for rezone applications like this one that require a showing that the public health, safety, and welfare will be served. It's documented in this application that it will increase the number of trips, as you can imagine, going from EFU to any number of industrial uses that could be allowed outright or conditionally in the requested zoning. The trips will increase. It's our position that this simply can't serve the public health, safety, and welfare when you are increasing the number of direct access trips to the highway right here. And that county's criteria just could not be met because of that. One of those statewide goals, moving on, that this application must comply with is Goal 14. That's the urbanization goal. It prevents urban uses on rural land. You know, I know there's been other applications dealing with this goal lately, so you're probably familiar with how it applies to applications like this. And you probably also remember that a few years ago, the county amended its plan to allow additional properties to seek a rural industrial use. Now, in that plan amendment, the county specifically found that future applications for rural industrial plan designations on specific properties will have to demonstrate that they're consistent with Goal 14. It's our position that hasn't been done in this application. There's no evidence or findings to support that all the uses that could come onto this piece of property under the county's rural industrial zone will comply with Goal 14. And as such, it would require an exception to Goal 14 to be approved. We heard a lot from the applicant about whether this property is agricultural land, which of course triggers statewide Goal III. It has water rights, as you've heard. It's documented in the record that it's been irrigated and crops have been grown, hay and pastureland on this property where it has water rights. and pasture land on this property where it has water rights. Some copies of those images are included in the written comments I've handed you today. And really, because it's been in farm use, and the NRCS has rated its soils as suitable for farm use, it is agricultural land under Goal 3. Now, there is a soil study included in this application from the applicant's hired soil scientist. And as you started to hear, we believe that that soil study is really factually deficient. And no pun intended, it waters down the amount of land that it deems as unsuitable for agriculture by inflating its denominator of unsuitable lands with the area of this canal. We also heard that state law considers water impoundments like this canal a farm use. So, you know, at minimum, it should have been left out of the analysis. I'm pretty sure that this soil scientist didn't survey the soil underneath this canal to analyze its quality. So it's really incorrect to have included the area of this canal in the soil study. And if you exclude that area, this soil study itself finds that this property is suitable for farm use, based on its soils. And these aren't insignificant areas. It looks like about an acre and a half of this 19-acre property is covered by the canal. There's also really unspecified areas that the soil study just calls infrastructure, and also deems those as unsuitable. If you look at some of the delineations, which are hard to read in the soil study, it looks like the, I don't see infrastructure in these two and a half acres that it deems unsuitable because it's infrastructure. I don't believe there are two and a half acres of buildings or structures covering this property. Impoundments of water are a farm use under this statute, as is, let's see, servicing and storing farm equipment, which we just heard again from the applicant, has occurred on this property for many years. That's a farm use under state law, showing that it's suitable for any number of farm uses, not all of which rely on the quality of its soils. As far as the presence of water on this land, we agree that many properties in Deschutes County and in the Central Oregon Irrigation District probably have more water on them than they need. You don't have to take away all of the water to both conserve water in our arid region and resume productive agriculture. Central Oregon Irrigation District water rights deliver about five and a half acre-feet of water per acre to their properties. Our neighbors to the north in Jefferson County in North Unit Irrigation District, their water rights are for two and a half acres of water. This year, of course, they have about a fifth of that due to the drought, yet they're still growing productive crops. A very feasible option on this property is to simply reduce the amount of water that is spread onto the land from that five and a half acre-feet down to something more reasonable, say, two and a half acre-feet, which is what North Unit normally receives. You can still grow productive crops on these productive soils while conserving water.
Rory, it's actually been almost six minutes. You're not considered an agency, I don't believe.
No. Thank you for the extension in time. That was actually the end of my prepared comments. So thank you for hearing testimony, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Okay, good. Any questions?
I do have a question about the traffic considerations. So the hearings officer has suggested this condition, limiting, you know, kind of putting a constraint on the development so to limit the trips to 32 trips, you know, per peak hour, or 279 daily trips. I guess, could you speak to why you believe that that condition would not adequately address the traffic impact concerns of the proposed application?
Sure. So the answer to that question really came from county planning staff, which said, and this is in the record, that the county lacks the ability to monitor or enforce a trip cap. So while this is proposed by the applicant and was included as a condition by the hearings officer to include this trip cap, it's demonstrated in the record that it's somewhat meaningless if the county can't actually monitor or enforce that to ensure that trips won't exceed that trip cap that will be written on paper, but no one will be out there monitoring for compliance with that trip cap. We also heard comments from ODOT before the hearings officer that, you know, they didn't outright say they don't agree with the trip cap, or that it's not sufficient to address the transportation impacts. But they recommended to the county that the county should really amend its code to provide for the idea of a trip cap as a means for dealing with traffic impacts. Of course, we don't dispute they agreed to the trip cap in order to, you know, sign off or comment favorably on this application. But those concerns are in the record, strongly from county staff, and also from ODOT, saying that it's, I would characterize it as not the best solution to simply write down a trip cap and expect it to do what it's intended to do.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Rory.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other parties in the room that care to testify at this time? Stephanie, is there anyone online? Okay. All right. Ken, if you would like to speak, then you have 10 minutes for your rebuttal.
So I understand that Mr. Kitzro is actually on the phone and trying to unmute, doing a star six. I think that's the correct instructions, right?
Yep.
So maybe we can see if he can figure out how to do that.
Do you have his phone number? If it's just popping up as a number, I could show that to the...
I don't, at the top of my...
You got it? There we go. Yep, he's coming up.
Sounds like he's coming on. While we're trying to get him going. Oh, Gary, can you, are you there?
Hi.
All right.
Yeah, I'm here.
You're very light. Can you try to speak loudly, please?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I'd like to respond to the testimony of Land Watch regarding the repudiation of our Order 1 statistical soil survey.
Could you identify yourself for the record, please?
I apologize. My name is Gary A. Kitzro. I'm a certified soil scientist and soil classifier, and a principal taxonomist with growing soils, environmental associate. My address is PO Box 18, Oakland, Oregon 97462.
Thank you.
May I proceed?
Yes, please.
Yes. In regards to the semantics and the stipulation regarding infrastructure, or also known as impact areas within the subject properties, to my knowledge, what I've been working with is working with attorneys in 15 different counties, as well as planning directors, is 1994 was a benchmark year. Any infrastructure that was put in, or disturbance such as impact, were, in the year 1994 or before, could be included as either useful, or efficacious, or non-efficacious for farm use. And therefore, of course, this is all considered, quote-unquote, "ancient" infrastructure because the canal and the associated outbuildings within the subject blocks of record were all prior to 1994. But that's something that should be validated by council and by county regarding that benchmark year. But regarding the infrastructure, as a USDA/NRCF soil scientist, the areas in question that underlie the canal and the outbuildings which are subject to this meeting, those areas were never attested to by NRCS soil scientists, myself, or my cohorts in person on a specific basis. We were never allowed or hired to go out and try to find out what the soils were underneath a, for example, the drainage canal that courses this property. So basically, this is, the soil taxons that we applied to the underlying materials, including the infrastructure, were subjective and based on conjecture and predictions only. They were never substantiated, they were never intended to be substantiated by myself, who was a USDA/NRCF soil scientist, or my cohorts and my supervisors at the state or regional level. So I wanted to make sure we clarify that, so nobody really knows that, as far as what exactly particularly are underneath those infrastructures of question. Number two is, according to my knowledge, what I've been taught by the DLCD and the associate cohorts regarding this protocol, if it is indeed a affected or impacted area, the question is, can those areas be economically or viably reclaimed or rehabilitated into a farm status? And so, it's an economic decision, do we take the canal out? Do we try, if there was soil that are efficacious underneath there, and by efficacious, I mean capability class 1 through capability class 6, with or without supplemental irrigation? The question is, is it economically viable to do so based on the empirical soils that may, in fact, be underneath that subject infrastructure? So the bottom line on that, to my knowledge, and we've been working with this in 15 different counties with this same question, is the fact that the viability of the soils empirically before they ever put a canal in or an infrastructure, is it worth economically to be able to rejuvenate those soils and become them into imperial status? And also, as a soil scientist and a soil taxonomist for over 30 years, it's important to know that we were hired to do a scientific inventory. We are not attesting the OARS or to jurisprudence regarding these issues. We are talking about empirical, fundamental soil inventories that are quantified, they're quantifiably justifiable, and they're site-specific, unlike the USDA/NRCF soil maps that I used to produce, which is an Order 3 generic, general level. Order 1s have specificity, we're testifying to a finite land base under very specific conditions. Regarding the water, you can bring in soil on some of the rock piles, and maybe you can get some agriculture. Again, the viability is, what is it, is it economically viable to bring in loads of soil or organic matter and put it on top of rock outcrops or very, very shallow soils to make it a farm unit? And that is where the empirical soil science that we do, and we do this all over the United States and overseas, is the fact that we want to try to find out exactly what the potential is for that soil from a theoretical native standpoint. When we assign a capability class 7 and 8, we believe, me and myself, as a professional soil taxonomist, we believe that it is not economically viable to rehabilitate a piece of property or an area that's been subjected to a linear infrastructure or a outbuilding, as long as it was produced or impacted before 1994. And that can, again, will be validated by staff and by the jurisprudence individuals here, which are more than capable of doing that. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Gary. Do we have any questions for Gary?
No questions. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Gary. Okay, so I only have a couple minutes left, so I'm going to try to be as quickly as I can. First, I think what is important to hear from that is that they look at the canal and infrastructure in terms of a certain date, and figure out whether you can viably turn it back into farmland and farm soils. In this case, again, as I already testified, we have a CUID canal and a federal easement that we can't impact, so it's not viable to totally turn that back into farm soils. We would request that if the board votes in our favor for this proposal, that they make findings to that effect. Two other things I want to address in relation to Mr. Rory Isbell, his testimony. First, on the issue of Goal 14, three things, sorry. On the issue of Goal 14, the county has adopted and acknowledged RI Zone. That means we can rely upon that as those being rural uses, not urban uses, they're rural. DLCD has acknowledged that, and the case law is clear. We can rely upon that as a rural use. There's really no dispute there. They may argue it, but Court of Appeals, et cetera, is quite clear on this. It's an acknowledged comprehensive plan that we can rely on, that they are rural uses. Second thing is, contrary to what Land Watch said, a diesel shop is not a farm use, or a farm equipment rental is not a farm use. It supports those uses. And what the statute says is you can have those sorts of uses in conjunction with your own farm operation. Case law is also clear on that. It has to be associated with your own farm use. On this property, it's not. Last thing I want to say is with regards to Goal 12 and traffic impacts, ODOT hasn't actually weighed in with concern, and instead, before the hearings officer, we asked for additional time so we could come up with an agreement between ODOT county staff and our transportation planner, all of which are seemingly in agreement that what we've proposed is safe, is fine for the proposal for the county, and should be supported. So we have ODOT, Peter Russell, county transportation planner, and our traffic expert, all agreeing that this condition works. With that, I don't have anything else. If there's any questions, otherwise, I do have one comment that I would like to make after any questions, if there's any.
Any questions? No?
No.
Okay.
Okay, so the comment that I would like to make is that the applicant is going to request that we do not have a record period, that the board accounting commissioners close this hearing now, and that we do not have an open record rebuttal or final legal argument, and instead come up with a date certain for deliberations. And if, in fact, the board votes to approve this application, that there's direction that we work, we are able to work with staff to, like I said before, kind of harmonize the decision with some newer county decisions, in particular, the ACED decision, and adopt findings about the canal.
Can you, can you explain your rationale for asking us to close the comment period?
Two things with particularity. First being that nothing new has been submitted today. There's no new evidence. Hearings officer made her decision over two months ago. This application has been going on for quite some time. We applied, I think, over a year ago, and the applicant would like to get, to be able to use their property. People like me cost a lot of money, and doing a record period when there isn't new evidence that's submitted is, I don't want to say wasteful, but it costs an applicant a lot of money. And so in this particular circumstance, Land Watch provided substantial testimony below at the hearings officer level, and again, the hearings officer distilled all of the information that was provided by us, the many letters and support in Land Watch, and came up with a very robust, over 100-page decision. And so I don't think there's a lot to revisit here. And then the second consideration is just time. It's been a long road for this applicant so far, for a piece of land that's never going to be super productive, and so the cost associated with that is significant. And so, again, throwing out my practical perspective, given that we haven't had any significant new testimony, we've had similar legal arguments made below. A three-week period, for the purpose of just having a three-week period and requiring additional submittal and attorney time, just, I don't want to say sounds wasteful, but that's why.
I guess the, you know, one of my concerns about closing opportunities to provide input too soon is that the ACED decision was just made fairly recently, and I think people could, you know, these are legally discreet pieces, but I mean, I think people could look at that decision and could look at this application and have cumulative effect-type concerns about rural and... concerns about rural industrial um uh, you know, plan amendment changes and and zone changes in this region. Uh I certainly, when we heard the ACED decision, you know, and I and I supported that that um that plan amendment change and and rezone, um like, yeah, I expressed the concern that I I I don't necessarily, you know, while I supported that application, uh because of its location at a major intersection, um you know, on on Highway ninety-seven, it didn't mean that I thought that uh these kinds of rezones to rural industrial would be appropriate in uh, you know, in a lot of other places. Um and, you know, this is, um, I I have some significant concerns about this application. And um I can imagine that uh, you know, members of the public kind of looking at this, looking at this application from a cumulative effects perspective might also have concerns, which, you know, are are just starting to stir uh as the, you know, as as the understanding of what what happened at ACED is setting in. So like, you know, for those reasons, I think it is important to um uh ex, you know, kind of provide people ample opportunity to en- engage in the process and and weigh in on this application. That's just my opinion.
Can I respond real quickly?
Go ahead. I just had a question for Tarek.
Sure.
Would you mind? Um, Tarek, when was the application filed? When was it complete in our record?
Complete in our record, I believe, late October. Um I could get a specific.
Late October of twenty-one.
Twenty-one, exactly. They applied in, I believe, September about a year ago, and then um we deemed them complete later in October and kind of moved into um discussions with transportation, things like that throughout the spring.
Okay. Thank you so much. I just wanted to know if it really had been almost a year.
Yeah, if we're looking at that kind of framing, that it has been almost a year, definitely, yeah.
Okay, all right. Go ahead.
Tarek's been great, by the way, on it.
Oh, no, he's.
Very responsive, which is.
Yeah, he's he's an incredible county employee, and we so appreciate him. I just wanted to know.
Agreed.
Go ahead, Ken.
Uh so so two things I forgot to mention, uh you you asked about farm deferral. Uh during our very short time period here, we've been able to confirm with the assessor's office that it hasn't been in farm deferrals since at least nineteen ninety-seven. Uh they would have to go back and do a a much broader search before nineteen ninety-seven. Uh but I can confirm uh that the assessor's office has told us that there has not been any farm deferrals since before nineteen ninety-seven. So to the extent that's relevant to this board. Uh the other thing I would I would mention is I certainly understand uh the concern about cumulative impacts, um but uh the ACED decision has been out for more than twenty-one days, and this application has been pending, uh including with the hearings officer decision, while ACED was bumping up and down a couple of times, again, for a year, and certainly the hearings officer's decision was two months ago. And so cumulative impacts uh are something that could have been raised by the public, by Land Watch, by anybody to this point, and they haven't. Uh it's also, quite frankly, not applicable criteria, and so when we're looking at how we have to prove our case and prove our burden before this board uh and in the land use system, uh what needs to be addressed is applicable criteria, and cumulative impacts is is not an applicable criteria. Uh so although I think it might be relevant in understanding kind of how land use may be changing in this county to reflect, you know, certain things like trying to grow rocks, um and whether or not it's appropriate to keep, you know, farmland as quasi-open space, it's not necessarily necessarily relevant or applicable criteria to this particular uh decision. So uh that that's how I would respond to that.
Can I also ask, uh, community, the community development department, are you tracking other, any other rural uh applications to for changes to rural industrial in the in the county right now?
We are, yeah. There's um only one other I'm aware of that's across the highway from ACED um right now that's at the, I believe, the hearings officer's stage, um or at least close to. Uh that's, I think that with this one and ACED make up the three that I'm aware of.
So same general neighborhood?
Correct, yeah, within relative distance of of each other, yep. This is, I mean, ACED and the other one are certainly within proximity of each other. This is a bit further north, this one is, but still within that highway corridor and um within considerable distance of the other properties.
Third application in the middle.
Yep, exactly.
Um, yeah, I mean, you can imagine a series of, a a series of uh, you know, piecemeal decisions adding up to essentially making Gushute Junction an industrial park. And I I do think that um the the community has, you know, has the the right to try to di- have some time to digest that, um and because there's, you know, there are a whole lot of people in our community who are not land use junkies, who who track this stuff and and, you know, um in great detail, but who might have opinions about uh turning Gushute Junction into an industrial park, so.
I I absolutely agree with you, but I think that those are broader policy questions that should be dealt with in a comprehensive planning process, and what we're requesting here is to have the county acknowledge essentially that this property has always been essentially used for that, as have other, not particularly this application, but as have other properties in this area. And so maybe during the county's comprehensive plan update that is currently about to commence or has has commenced, maybe they should look at that from a broader policy perspective. But when it comes to this specific quasi-judicial application and whether it meets land use uh applicable criteria, we submit that it does. But I totally agree with you. I think that this stuff should be taken a look at from a broader policy perspective as part of a comprehensive plan update. But but that's different than the application we have here. Uh what we have here is an application that has been noticed for a year, uh and has been pending during the pendency of the ACED case as well. Uh and so it's certainly been uh around the block for a while, and those concerns have not been raised uh so far, despite the pretty robust uh process that's occurred, as well as comment from from Land Watch consulting process with ODOT. Uh and as this board, I think, is aware, you know, there's been, unlike a lot of my land use files, there's over forty comments in support of this application. So uh the point is, is that the public has been fairly engaged and and has been supportive. Uh so that's all I can say. I I agree with you from a broader policy, we we should look at it, uh you know, for the same reasons why we're looking at a tunnel of community plan and all of those sorts of things, but but it should be done from a county-led process on that policy and not in in under the guise of uh a specific quasi-judicial application that complies with the the current law.
I'd still like to give the community that additional three weeks, but I'm I'm one vote up on the dice here, so.
I I would say on that point, the the public as a broader perspective certainly could have weighed in. During the comment period, it it becomes a lot more narrow, which I I'm sure that the the commissioner understands, uh in terms of who could participate and when and how they can participate during a record period. So I don't think we're really changing much. That's just my perspective.
Dave, do you have any comment to make on that request?
There's no requirement that you hold the record open. Uh this is the second public hearing, so I don't believe there's been a request to hold the public, the written record open. So you have the full discretion whether or not you want to have an open record period or not. It's totally dependent upon on what the board's preference would be in that, if that's the question you had.
Yes, that was my question. Thank you so much. Okay.
If this were the first public hearing, there would, and there was a request to hold the record open, you'd have no choice, you'd have to.
Right.
Because it's the second public hearing, it's discretionary on your part.
It does appear with, Tarek, with the dates that you had suggested, that if we did allow new evidence until the fourteenth of September, rebuttal twenty-first, and final on the twenty-eighth, that's 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 within a year. That's not good.
Yeah.
I know.
Correct, yep.
I know. I just wanted to, um, yes, any?
So Commissioner, uh I do support closing the record at this time and setting a date for deliberations. Uh, you know, this does follow a model of other rural industrial requests, you know, the ACED case that was mentioned. Uh so, you know, doing a little bit of homework and making sure we want to adopt or, you know, whatever we do with the hearings officer decision. Uh so, yeah, setting deliberations, I support that at this time.
Okay, so we cannot do deliberations on the fourteenth of September because we do not have a meeting. So then, if we're just trying to keep the time up, the twenty-first, what does that meeting date look like for us?
Sure, uh I think that date would be um totally doable. I am actually out of town that week, but it's, but we could probably find other CDD staff to hold that deliberation for you um on that, on the twenty-first, if that's the date you're um looking at.
Just trying to be mindful that time is money.
Certainly.
Um, so would that work then? But you will be gone.
Setting it two two weeks from today.
Right, two weeks from today, then?
Okay, like deliberations for the twenty-first?
Yes.
All right.
So if you're going to proceed that way, I would suggest that you you formally close the the hearing.
Okay.
The oral and the written record and indicate that deliberations will take place two weeks from today.
Okay, so we will close the oral and written record at this moment in time. I do believe we have um significant hearings officer file in order to review. So we will close it at this time, and we will have our deliberations then on the twenty-first of September.
Very good, yeah. Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Thank you, Tarek. It will be, I'm hap- I'm happy you'll be gone, but we'll miss you.
Yes.
I'm glad you're going to take some time off.
Yeah, me too. That'll be great. Yeah, and I'll be able to kind of coordinate in the meantime for anything else you might want to.
Okay, maybe you could send in Will or someone like that.
Yeah, your your choice, whoever you prefer.
Oh, well, we prefer you, Tarek. But Will's, Will could be fine, so thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you. Okay, so we're now at item number ten. Um, let's see, is that you, Holly? Patiently waiting?
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having us today. Um Holly Harris, Program Manager with Behavioral Health. And I am here today to request consideration of board approval and chair signature of document two zero two-two dash seven four one, which is our Oregon Criminal Justice Commission Impacts Grant Amendment. Um so as you all know, we applied for the Impacts Grant several years ago, back in, and we were awarded it back in October of twenty twenty. Um and at at that time, it was about two-point-four million dollars um for two years, which we, which helped the Stabilization Center get to twenty-four-seven operations. Uh we were, we then reapplied, um and were awarded another two-point-three million dollars, a little over, um to buy us another two more years. So this, uh they decided to do an amendment to the original contract, um as opposed to a entirely new grant award, they just extended the period of time um for the grant. Um just to recap on what the Impacts Grant is focused on, um the target population is defined as individuals who receive services and supports funded through the Impacts Program that have one or more behavioral health conditions and are booked into jail an average of four or more times in one year, or have had uh four or more police contacts in one year. So we, as you know, the Stabilization Center is more of a preventative um service. We are aiming at keeping people, like allowing twenty-four-seven access to mental health services. We're hoping people will get their needs met at the time they need them, as opposed to entering the target population and then receiving help. So we are kind of hitting it from both ends. We are absolutely serving the target population and reporting data to Impacts Grant on that. But our our true mission really is to keep people from becoming members of the target population and to coming to the attention of law enforcement and entering the criminal justice system. Um and so just um some quick data points to kind of show what we've done so far this um over the last few years. We've served over twenty-two-hundred unique individuals. Um we've had nearly seven thousand visits since opening, um of course, all during a pandemic, because we have no other frame of reference prior to that. Um about seventeen percent of the individuals we serve identify as houseless. Um that number has actually gone down, um and I, you know, I I can't say what caused that number to go down. I think there are a number of factors. There were some investments that were made that created some other opportunities, shelter opportunities um for this population. Um and so I, that number, it obviously fluctuates because this is real-time data, uh but at this moment in time, it is at seventeen percent. Uh twenty-one percent of the people that we serve are brought to us by law enforcement. Um we are still averaging four and a half minutes per law enforcement drop-off, so they are spending very little time with us, which is the goal, so that they can get out protecting the community and doing what they do best. Um about twenty-three percent of the people we serve end up going into our respite unit, where that's the five recliners where people can technically stay with us for up to twenty-three hours, but most people, the average length of time that they stay in those recliners is about eleven hours. Um and and I think that's important to note, because what it's telling us is, we're not having people just come and stay twenty-three hours just for the sake of staying twenty-three hours. We are very intentional with the use of that service, um which is allowing those five recliners to be enough for us right now. We don't, or we are not at capacity with that. We have capacity still built in with that, um and we keep those, that service moving and base it on acuity and need, and we're always having a plan for what's next, um whenever anybody enters um the respite unit. Um the aver- approximately thirty percent of individuals were still diverting from the emergency department. Um and we've had about two percent of people tell us that they would have ended their life. So in thinking about Suicide Prevention Month right now, that comes to about eighty-four people who have told us specifically that had we not been available to help them when we were, when they needed it, they would have taken their own life. Um and so that's a pretty powerful number, still gives me chills every time I say it out loud. Um and there's about thirteen hundred other people who say, I don't know what I would have done had you not been here. And so I I'm sure a portion of those thirteen hundred would have had a a negative outcome had we not been available to serve them. And so I think it just speaks to the critical nature of being available around the clock to meet the needs when they arise, as opposed to having people have to wait, because sometimes people can't wait. Um the funds that we were awarded will will go almost entirely to personnel costs at this point. Uh as you all know very well, our personnel costs have gone up um for lots of really good reasons, um and but they have gone up, and so that's primarily what this grant will fund, along with uh ten percent towards indirect cost to help um provide those services. So I'll stop there and um see if there are any questions.
Well, uh personnel costs are the key to this whole thing.
Right.
We have a facility, it was built purposefully, and it's in great shape, and it's doing the job, so now it's keeping the staff and keeping the doors open. So it's pretty exciting to know this program is, uh, you know, got a few more years of of funding, so we've built it and now it's funded, uh so we'll take it step by step, maybe biennium, bi- by biennium. Uh but yeah, it's pretty exciting to see this going so well.
Thank you.
It's, it is welcome news and an incredible relief to to see this Impacts funding coming into coming into place to to preserve these incredibly important services for our community. I am uh, I am concerned, uh, you know, and I will, I I will certainly vote in support of approving uh um this a grant, this grant agreement, but uh I am concerned, you know, looking back, you know, a year, a year past from now, um that we were um, we were really uncertain about how we were going to keep the doors open at the Stabilization Center. You know, this uh this uh extension, this continuation of the Impacts Grant Program kind of um saved our bacon. I I and uh, you know, there was a a huge effort to, you know, seek support from our cities, seek support from, you know, Saint Charles, uh seek support from the Central Oregon Health Council, thank you Commissioner Dyer, um but we were really scrambling, and and so at at the same time I, that we should celebrate the um uh the continuation of this funding, I I also wanted to ask questions about the future. Um, you know, my first question would be, you know, so what percentage of the total operating cost of the Stabilization Center is this grant covering? And you don't need to give me a very precise, but is this a quarter, a third?
I I would say it's more than a third. I would think it's probably, probably forty percent, maybe? It's it's significant. It's a significant portion. It covers basically our aft, all of our after-hours operations, including our weekends. So if with with this grant were removed today, um we would be able to operate Monday through Friday until about nine PM, um and that's because of the contribution from the Sheriff's Office that helps provide what we refer to as our swing shift operations. So that money funds the swing shift operations. Without that contribution, it would be Monday through Friday, kind of our traditional um hours. Uh we might be able to get a little, we were able to obtain some additional dollars through the CCO this past year, which would probably allow us um maybe to expand it to like eleven or, you know, beyond, but it would be Monday through Friday.
Thank you. And um Thank you. And so given the importance of this, you know, potentially 40% of the operating budget of the Stabilization Center, what do we know about the probability that the Impax Program will continue? That we would consider, you know, we would continue to be considered, you know, you know, in the sweet spot of the bull's, in the bull's eye for, you know, the goals of this grant program? Well, there's two questions I'd love to.
I wish I knew the future of the Impax Program. What I can tell you is we are advocating very hard at the state level with legislators, with, you know, the Criminal Justice Commission, with anyone who we think can move that along. Disability Rights Oregon is a big fan of the Impax Program and helping push that forward. So we hope it will become, I think the intent when it was created was that we would, these pilots would be created. They would demonstrate whether they were effective or not. I think we have done that. Our data absolutely demonstrates that this works, which I think is what set us up for success in being re-awarded. And so I think it will all depend on what happens at the legislative level and whether they re-approve this funding going forward. I believe if they do re-approve it, we are a strong contender to continue to receive this funding. We have become a model for the state on how to do this work. We've actually had 12 other states reach out to us to help them develop similar type models. And at least seven other Oregon counties have also said, hey, we're thinking about doing this now too. We're applying for the Impax Grant. We're doing, we've got some funding. How can we also do what you're doing? So it would surprise me greatly if we weren't at least a strong contender for continued funding if the Impax Grant is re-awarded.
I mean, and I guess my third question along those same lines is if the Impax Grant Program continues, if we can continue to be an attractive applicant or, you know, you know, right in the, right at the forefront for the state, what else could we be doing with those impact grant funds if we found other ways to stabilize the funding for the Stabilization Center? And, you know, one of the things I particularly am interested in is whether the Impax Grant is something that we could be looking at to pursue some of the, some of the expansions of our Mobile Crisis Assessment Team Program that, that also have been proven to be incredibly effective in preventing, you know, preventing behavioral health issues from becoming public safety crisis issues upstream. So, I mean, is that, is that, is that one of the places where we could be seeking funds from the Impax Grant? If we were able to find other ways to ensure the 24/7, 365 operation of the Stabilization Center?
There is no shortage of need for the Impax Funding across the continuum of services we provide at Health Services. I mean, the target population is pretty broadly defined. I mean, it's just somebody who's a basically high utilizer of the criminal justice system. And it's only four or more bookings or four or more arrests. We deal with people that have had 50 or more. So it's a pretty, in my opinion, lower bar for who enters the target population. So absolutely things like expansion of Mobile Crisis, expansion of our intensive forensic team that serves our aid and assist population, that serves our, you know, our folks that are at risk of incarceration, our forensic diversion team that we have internally to be able to provide additional services. So there's a lot of ways that Impax Funding could be applied. And what I always say, and I've said it a number of times in here, is that it's, the whole continuum of crisis services is critical. We need the non-law enforcement response. We also need a law enforcement response occasionally. We need a place for people after they've had a response to go to in order to stabilize because otherwise you're just doing a revolving door of response and not actually getting people stabilized and connected. So it's all critical and whether the funding goes here or there, I mean, it just needs funding, all of it. So I hope that answers your question.
That did. Thank you.
Holly, I have a question. What is your FTE situation at this moment in time then for your program?
Yeah, we've, we, a lot of work was done thanks to this board for supporting all of those efforts to stabilize our workforce. We came out of about a 30% vacancy situation a year ago where we were, I think all I had was about two or three positions. I think that's still about where we are. We have about three open positions at this time. They are kind of, you know, critical positions. Our swing shift has been interesting. It's, it's one of our, it's our busiest shift. So that's from 3:00 PM to 11:30. It's busier than even our day shift. And it, we have struggled to get applications for that, even with some of the efforts that have been put in place. So we're continuing to look for ways to, to make that appealing for folks, trying to get feedback around what that might look like, stealing some ideas from the hospital who have overcome some challenges in that area. So I may be back before the board at some point with some ideas around that if we don't start to see some applications soon. But I'm kind of letting the new hiring, you know, bonuses and things like that kind of play out a little bit to see if that has an impact. But we're doing pretty good overall.
You are then? Okay, because I know at times we've been.
Oh, yeah.
It's been seriously, seriously underfunded, you know, not funded, but no employees. So that's, that's really good to hear. I've met a couple of people recently who've changed their lifestyle to not have to have childcare. And they've actually, one partner works during the day and the other one works in the evening. And so that actually, that kind of a schedule, that 3:00 to 11:30 PM would help people that are, you know, don't want to have childcare. You know, they just, and they know it's for five years or something when they have a baby. So I mean, just for a thought out there for the world. And then my other question is, it says 30% are diverted from St. Charles. Are you talking 30% of the 2,200 or of the total visits of 7,000? I mean, I'm just wondering, how big of a diversion is this? And we know when you go to the ER, how much that costs the hospital. So what have we really saved, St. Charles? I'm just wondering which number I can use.
Sure. It's not the 7,000 visits. It would be of the total, we have kind of two data sets. So we have our, we track our law enforcement drop-offs and our walk-ins. And those are the people that we're asking, you know, where would you have gone if we hadn't been here? And they say the emergency department or they give some other answer. And then we have our total visits with our dashboard that we have that talks about all the services we provide at the Stabilization Center. So our case management, peer support, and that's the 7,000. So of the 30%, it would be of the.
2,200?
Yeah, 2,300.
So it's like 660 diversions from then St. Charles emergency?
Yes. And that, and we actually have tied numbers to that. And it's, I think it's in one of, some of our reports that we've submitted. And it's anywhere between $400,000 and $800,000 a year savings.
Okay, good. Great. Thank you so much. Thank you, Holly. Thanks for your patience. Your patience for the last couple of years during COVID, all the things you've done. And, you know, what a great fact that we do have it open. And I believe Jefferson County is using it a bit. And I saw the number on Creek County that it had come up too. So it's, you know, it's really fairly accessible to the whole Central Oregon region. And I thank you for, for doing it because clearly it's very expensive. And I wouldn't expect every county to have a stabilization center, but we can serve the public. So it's great.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion? I believe so.
I'll move approval, chair signature of document number 2022-741, CJC Impax Grant for additional two years through June 30th of 2024.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I would like to say that the fact that this essential service for our community, what has become an essential core service for our community is dependent, is so heavily dependent on competitive grant funding is really problematic in my mind. You know, it'd be one thing if this was part of our kind of staple Oregon Health Authority annual agreement. But this is, this is, you know, competitive grant funding from a pretty new grant program. And I, to avoid being in the situation we were in just about a year ago, I would encourage us to start thinking now about how to secure long-term predictable funding within our own community from the people who benefit, the organizations that benefit the most from the Stabilization Center to, you know, make it so that we don't need to depend on the Impax Grant for the, for the operation of the Stabilization Center. And then we can, we can pursue some of the other cool things that can be done at crisis services with this funds, if they, with these funds, if they continue to be available.
Holly, wasn't it 62% of the people visiting from Bend? I know, I think that was my, is that the number still pretty?
It's still around, in the ballpark, yes.
Okay. And what did the city of Bend contribute to the Stabilization Center?
They did a one-time contribution of 70,000.
70?
And we're actually in the works around a contribution, not to the Stabilization Center, but to the non-law enforcement response for Mobile Crisis. There, we were in the middle of an intergovernmental agreement to have a contribution, I believe through some one-time funds as well for a position, for the non-law enforcement response.
Okay.
Yeah, so my advocacy at the, at the city of Bend, I think, helped to deliver something in the range of $300,000. Commissioner Adair's advocacy with the Central Oregon Health Council, we'll talk about that next, secured another piece. But there were, there are a number of other entities who, who received great benefit from the Stabilization Center who aren't contributing yet. And I think that should be our focus over the next year.
Thank you, Holly. So I believe you're next on the agenda with item number 11.
I am. And this one should be fairly quick since we've just covered most of what this is related to. But this, I'm here today on this agenda item to, for consideration of COHC Impax Grant Award Acceptance. So as Commissioner Chang mentioned, Commissioner Adair's advocacy and investigatory work on what's available through the Central Oregon Health Council helped, helped us identify this opportunity. And it's through the, it's actually, it's funny, it's called the Impax Incentive Funds, not related to the Impax Grant. But it's basically a matching grant that COHC provides for any other award that is, that is, that is received. And so it's up to $250,000. So we applied for kind of this matching opportunity to the Impax Grant. And as you know, the Impax Grant, our personnel costs went up. So the amount we got for Impax the previous two years did not cover all of our costs going forward. So this $250,000 helped fill the gap. And it was, it's a wonderful opportunity and we were awarded. And so we are here today to request acceptance of that.
Yes. Think that's great. It is for two years, so it's 125,000 a year, right?
I believe it's, yes. It, no, yeah, it's 125,000 a year, correct. Yeah, the COHC funds are pretty flexible compared to other types of grant funds where they can, we can carry over if they're unspent and so forth.
Great. No, thank you so much. Yeah.
Thank you.
You know, every dime counts, right? And these are, we're talking thousands of dollars. So thank you to that. Do we have any other discussion? Could we have a motion?
So there's, we need two motions, right?
Yes.
So I'll make the first motion. Move approval of document number 2022-748, a Central Oregon Health Council Impax Grant. I guess acceptance of that grant.
And I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. And we have a second part of a motion?
I'll move approval of the board's signature of order number 2022-025, Designating Signing Authority to Holly Harris.
Second.
Further discussion?
So just acknowledging, you know, so the messaging is resonating. You know, we've got two, more than two years of this operation, being able to get more buy-in from different organizations, just like Commissioner Chang's advocating for. It's good to have kind of a package of knowledge, package of facts, paragraphs explaining what we're doing, why we're doing it, how it's affecting the community. I think we have the opportunity to really sell this to our tri-county partners better now. So I think, you know, on the horizon is opportunity to look for those, you know, hopefully more stable partnerships in funding.
And thank you for being able to explain something so complex in such concise terms and with great, great data to demonstrate the impact.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you, Holly.
Thank you. Good to see you all.
Okay, I think we're talking about a Caterpillar next.
Caterpillar.
This is great.
Morning Commissioners. Chad Sotola, Director of Solid Waste. Now that we've, we've implemented the Nega's Transfer Station Improvements Project, we need to start acquiring equipment for that operation. So today we have a, a sales order before you for the purchase of a Caterpillar loader for that operation used for waste handling and other maintenance activities at the site. We work with the road department on heavy equipment purchases using a SourceWell, which is a cooperative purchasing program that the county participates in. And we, we get a range of about 5% to 10% discount through purchasing through SourceWell. So.
Chad, could I ask you a question?
Yes, absolutely.
What is this sales tax? Is this some kind of a fee on something? I'm like, this is from Hillsborough and I'm going like, sales tax? Really?
Legal counsel had asked me yesterday about that and it is actually the Oregon Corporate Activity Tax.
Oh, that's right.
So I talked with, with the road department yesterday to make sure in the future that all these purchases indicated that way rather than a sales tax. And apparently that's come up before with the, with the road department and some purchases. So it is not a sales tax, it is a corporate activity tax. So after, when I spoke with Dave yesterday, we agreed we want to bring this forward with that unmodified. But we did verify that it is corporate activity tax.
We're buying a Caterpillar and we have to pay a tax on it? I thought this had something to do with if we grossed over a million dollars and then all these taxes came into effect. But it actually goes, because they're selling it, they're passing on this tax to us because they're going to make money on it? Is, who's, who's actually, yeah, what is the general idea behind this? Do you have any idea?
I do not. I defer to Dave. Perhaps he has some information on it.
Nothing more than the political campaigns for and against it.
Well, I just was like.
The dealer is passing along their corporate activity tax burden to us.
That's exactly what's occurring.
And they're allowed to do that under Oregon statute, apparently.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I've seen it on a couple of little bills, but how interesting.
What's the amount?
2,300.
And then our dollars are going directly to our schools. That's, I mean, it's sort of a convoluted pathway, but.
Correct.
So this is going to be a new piece, new piece of equipment. Or expanding the fleet, I guess, is kind of what I'm.
We're expanding the fleet. We're expanding our facilities and operations. If you've been to the transportation here at Notlandville, we have a large loader that's in the building with a large box on the front. We used to collect waste and push it off to the side and load into trailers. So it'll be used for that purpose. Also, we're getting, with, with the purchase, we're getting a snowplow attachment for, for site maintenance work. Should we, should we ever get enough snow up in Redmond again?
Oh, it's going to come this winter, I think.
We're due. Well, it's our.
Also, big expenditures in solid waste these days, but we'll go have a nice new facility and big building and the equipment to go with it.
Yeah, this is the largest piece of equipment purchased. We have a small excavator that will, will be substantially less costly than this probably in the county administrator's authority to authorize. This is by far the largest piece of equipment. That'll be a part of that fleet.
Takes big machines to do your job.
It does, yeah, yeah. And with the, the supply chain issues, we want to get the order rolling on this fairly quickly. Caterpillar did agree to put us in their, in their manufacturing line at this point without the sales agreement. So we will have it well ahead of the grand opening for the Nega's facility.
So when is the ETA arrival then?
I don't have a delivery schedule for it. The, the construction schedule that Kirby Nagle Howard has shared with us for the project is about 14 months. And typically, equipment like this doesn't take nearly that long to acquire.
Yeah, maybe.
Maybe. The one issue on a side note with the Nega's project is, is getting a transformer for Central Electric. They've told us it could be up to a 24-month process. And we actually did our order with them about six months ago. So we have not heard of a delivery schedule for them, but that particular piece of equipment could hold up the, the opening of the facility.
Really?
Yeah.
So it's a transformer then?
A transformer from Central Electric. It's, it's nothing that Kirby Nagle Howard would furnish. It's something that the utilities provide for us.
Okay. Okay. All right. So do we have a, a motion?
Move approval and signature of the attached sales agreement and with Peterson Caterpillar for the purchase of a Caterpillar 950M loader in the amount of $419,080. for the purchase of a Caterpillar 950M loader in the amount of $419,080, $419,087.14.
And I will second it.
Any further discussion?
I'll just acknowledge the Beaver pride out there, a lot of people are proud of that right now.
That's right.
Big win.
I just want to drive the, you know, I just want to have a chance to drive-
You're more than welcome to come.
There was, there was a, you know, there was a period of my life where I was an excavator operator for a few months, so I have a little bit of experience.
This will be the next size-up, probably.
Ergonomics has changed some stances over the years, it's actually quite remarkable how, how comfortable it is for equipment operators, especially if you're doing that for a living.
My sister was driving a Baylor the other day, and she goes, "Don't worry, Patty, it's nothing like Dad had to do, it's all air-conditioned and everything is cool," and I'm like, "Mary Lynn, how can you drive a Baylor?" So, anyway, all right, anyway, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So, thank you, Chad.
Have a good day.
Yeah, we won't say anything about the ducks, will we? Of course not, not today.
I'll stay positive.
Okay, item number fourteen, thirteen, lucky thirteen.
Hello.
Hello, Chris, good morning.
Top of the morning.
Yes, top.
Ready here. Going to bring down my Beaver helmet from here.
Here we go, there it is again.
Please don't. No, you, you may, it's always good, at least one team in this, major team one, so that's good.
I'm not going to get too excited about one win yet, but thank you. Good morning, for the record, Chris Doty, Road Department Director. Board, as you're most likely aware, recent, the, the recent federal bipartisan infrastructure law extended the curial schools an additional three years and rolled it back to 2017 levels. Curial schools' funding is allocated into three categories or titles, as it's referred to. Title one is dedicated to roads and schools, title two is federal funding for federal projects on federal land, and then title three is dedicated to county projects, like Firewise Community Program, or search and rescue activities, that type of thing that comes into the natural resources budget of the county. As a function of that extension, counties are provided some flexibility on how to allocate between the three titles. However, because we receive over $350,000 from SRS, we actually have very little flexibility, they put sideboards on, on what you can put in each title, and that flexibility was outlined in the staff report. So, before you is resolution 2022-062, which defines the county's allocation to maximize the funding for Title One and, and also for Title Three, which are the funding streams that flow into the Deschutes County budget for county projects, such that we're proposing 85% for Title One and 7% for Title Three, those are the maximum amounts that can be delivered to, to the county through SRS, and that leaves 8% for Title Two, which would remain with the, the federal government for use on, on federal land for federal projects. This is how we've, we've always historically allocated the SRS funding when the, the federal government has asked us to update our elections, which doesn't happen every time, but they're, they've done so this time with the, the extension of this SRS. So, with that, do you have any questions?
Oh, I thought we could ask for 112%.
Yeah, well, they're, they're pretty good at math.
Yeah.
There, it's, but, but, you know, never hurts to ask, I suppose.
Well, I just saw that, and I thought, well, what's the maximum we could get? Would they catch it?
I think so.
You never know.
Chris, I don't necessarily have a question, but I, I did want to offer a potential rationale to consider a different allocation. As my fellow Commissioners may know, the, the Title Two program is, those are funds that go to projects on federal land, but they are not necessarily funds that are going to the Forest Service. Many of those, those funds are allocated out, distributed out through a grant program, and the decisions, or kind of the recommendations for that grant program are made by a resource advisory committee, made up of community members from various different perspectives, you know, there's, there's room for local officials, there's room for people from, from industry, there's room for recreationists, there's room for conservation people, you know, the whole gamut, and one of the types of partners that I have observed be funded through, through, through RACs with Title Two funding in the past are, you know, and this is especially true in places like Clackamas County, groups that do cleanup activities on federal lands, and, you know, as, as you all know, probably since the last time that we, that the Board of Commissioners had a chance to consider this allocation, homeless encampments and illegal dumping, you know, sometimes, sometimes by homeless people, sometimes by non-homeless people, in our federal lands is becoming an increasingly large problem. So, if we were to, if we, you know, so where that, where that takes me is to, to suggest or propose, if we were to take a couple of percent out of our, sorry, Chris, out of our roads portion, you know, you take 2%, that's, that's close to $25,000, and those are funds that groups like, you know, the community organization here in our, in Deschutes County named Public Land Stewards, those are funds that a group like Public Land Stewards could apply for through the, the RAC Title Two process, to do some of the work that we desperately need done out in, in places like China Hat, or, you know, other Forest Service locations of concern, you know, the, the edges of Sisters. And, you know, I, I definitely understand the rationale, the past rationale of, you know, if we allocate according to this, you know, 85, 8, 7 split, you know, it means that the, the maximum amount of money is going to county operations, and we know exactly how we're spending those funds. I would, I would argue that it's possible that the funds could provide more important public services potentially, going through the RAC Title Two program to community partners. That's, that's just my pitch, and, you know, Chris, you could give us a sense of, you know, how much of an impact, you know, taking, you know, 12,000 for 1% or 24,000 for 2%, you know, how, how big of an impact that really has on, on the work of, of the Road Department?
Yeah, so, thank you, and just to clarify, the, the Title One is actually split, 75% for roads and 25% for schools, and so, anything coming out of Title One would be not fully from the Road Department, but 25% of that would, would come from the county school fund, which is distributed to districts, I understand.
Right, well, if I understand correctly, it goes up to the, it goes up to the common school fund, which then is proportionally distributed across the state, so, you know, if we, if we send $10,000 to the, to the common school fund, it doesn't necessarily mean that Deschutes County schools get $10,000 back.
Yeah, and forgive my ignorance for not knowing exactly the mechanism of how that works, that was a question I've been asking myself for, for some time, but as far as the impact of the Road Department, I mean, you, you did the math correct, you know, we're a 27.5 million dollar budget operation, and so 25,000 is, is, you know, a very, very small percentage of that, so, but certainly it's the Board's decision, and, and we're happy to take that and report it forward, but the deadline is at the end of this month, we have to have that, and it's actually, the 19th, I believe, is, is when the county, Association of Oregon Counties wants that report from each county, so they can aggregate it and move it forward.
Yes, I think they actually wanted it, like, a couple days ago, because, yes, they're sending out reminders now.
Yeah, they're, they're hassling us all with emails, but, but there's still a few weeks.
Okay.
Does the, are these CIP funds for the Road Department, capital projects?
So, it's funding that, that rolls into the, to the top of our budget, as you're aware, we, we take care of maintenance and operations first, and then, and then whatever shakes out after, after, you know, those things have been funded, ultimately ends up in capital projects, so.
So, they're flexible, and they can be used for anything?
You know, this would be going.
Flexible funds are good.
I'm supportive, Commissioner Chang, I mean, that's, that's a great idea, let's see what we can do, a percentage, a number's fine, you know, it's good to know that we're, you know, supporting the effort, decisions being made on, on the lands, the impacts are happening, you know, hopefully, and as I say, someday we're going to be able to turn a corner here, because we don't want to just keep cleaning up behind people as we're chasing them around, or, you know, I'm not trying to answer anything there, I'm just saying, what, you know, what a shame.
And I mean, I do want to emphasize that, you know, especially, you know, in, in places like Clackamas County, where I've, I've seen, you know, that this kind of, this model of, you know, Title Two funds being used for, for cleanup, you know, that, true in Clackamas County, and also, I think, true here, that not all the junk that's out in the forest is being left there by homeless people.
Oh, yeah, I'm not judging that.
Recreationists are, are, there's recreations who are leaving a bunch of stuff.
Can we put direction at this level to Title Two discussions, or is it going to be a pool of money that?
Yeah, I, I believe that we have, I, I believe that after the RAC makes the recommendations, we do get to approve the list of projects that, that are funded through Title Two, but there hasn't been a Title Two grant competition for a number of years, you know, they've, they've just been, kind of default funding that the projects that were-
We can do, we can do, then, try to just put the word out and explain that this is the intention.
Yeah, so we could do some, we could do some outreach and encourage certain kinds of groups, you know, that have emerged in the last few years to, to pursue these funds, that's, we, well, I was also going to say, I, I believe that they were also seeking, seeking rack, seeking people to sit on the rack, the Deschutes-Ocheco Rack for the Two Forests recently, that, that application window may have closed, I considered, I considered applying, but then, thought about all the other committees I'm serving on, I, I just couldn't, couldn't fit it, but there, there may even be opportunities to engage in the decision-making process at, for Title Two funds in that way, if, if either of you are interested.
Interesting that you'd mentioned Clackamas County, I saw a news story this morning, and they actually had a point-in-time count from Montloma-Clockamas, and Clackamas point-in-time count from January was in the neighborhood of 500. I believe it, it was like way less than, well, Port, Montloma was 5,200 for last January, so, I'm like, what is Clackamas County, where is their count so much significantly different? And I think we have about 400 people out in China Hat right now, so, yeah, which, of course, is adding to the area, so do we have a motion, then?
Their Veterans Village is any indication, they're a few years ahead of us in thinking about facilities and services.
But their Veterans Village is 15 people, that's what they had to cut it back to, when they doubled it, they said that doesn't really work, so, you know.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying that, you know, they, before it was even a twinkle in the eye for us, they were already doing things like that, and if that reflects that there's a whole other range of homeless facilities and homeless services being offered in Clackamas County, then that may very well account for the lower numbers.
Okay, is there a motion?
Well, so, yeah, how, there's a proposed resolution, Commissioner Chang mentioned going, adding 2% to Title Two, so, I mean, we can do that verbally, is a-
You could make that motion to just authorize that change to the resolution and-
Is that going from 13 to 15%? Is that how that would read, Chris?
No, it's going from 8 to 10.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That'd be an 83, 10, 7.
83 for Title One, 10 for Title Two, and 7 for Title Three, is, is how I'm reading this.
Okay.
Go ahead, then, Commissioner.
Okay, so, would that, would the motion then describe a revised resolution, 2022?
They'll just correct it to, to conform with what you've decided today, it's, because you haven't approved it yet, so it'll still be the same resolution number, it'll just have the different formula, the 83, 8 and 7, or whatever the numbers were.
And then 7.
Okay, I, I move to approve resolution 2022-062 with allocation to Title One, Two and Three, as discussed today.
Here you go, I will second it.
Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay, now we're at item 14.
Thank you, Commissioners, for the record, Laura Skundrick, Management Analyst for Finance.
You're welcome.
So, as a reminder, in fiscal year '21, Deschutes County was awarded about $38.4 million in American Rescue Plan Act funds through the federal government, and on October 20th in 2021, you approved a $350,000 grant award to Ree Village for their childcare expansion project. You recently requested updates on the childcare projects that received ARPA funding, so today, Ree Village is here with us to present the first in that series of childcare project updates, and with us today, we have Erica Spate and Becca Ellis from Ree Village to provide you that update.
Great, so we'll offer just a brief summary, you may have our written summary in front of you, just a brief summary, then, questions if you have them. From the first, for the first part of this year, working with Central Oregon Intergovernmental Council, we worked with a business coach, and, you know, we're, we're small and new, so, we said, okay, what do we need to do to get this, this program sustainable and then replicable in order to expand those four additional sites? So, we started that process in January of this year. And then, through that process, we were then able to first really clarify our process for getting our current site to be sustainable, so, part of that was hiring, hiring more staffing, which, as you might know from a lot of that discussion, is a huge barrier, just to, to have proper staffing, and we're excited that now, just within really the last couple months, because of background checks and different processes, that our current site is now running at full staff capacity, and so, we were able, we're now able to start getting that enrollment full as well, and turning toward our next expansion.
Another significant piece of work was the application process for preschool promise, which you may be familiar with, and so, we just found out last week that we are going, our second site will be a preschool promise site, so that was an essential part also of fulfilling our mission and also the financial sustainability of our program.
And then, our, our next priority this year has been continuing to build a relationship with Bend Methodist Church downtown, where we had identified our second site, and we've been working with them for a while, and, and there's been a lot of, there were at the beginning of the year, quite a few holdups as far as city codes and renovations, but we're now getting to the end of our renovations, we're starting to order our furniture, and we have a plan to open that second site on October 15th, this will be able to serve 20 preschool children ages three to five, and 10 of those, like we said, will be preschool promise, and then the other 10 slots will be for our private paid families, where, so our model-
Is that the 350 a month?
Yes, so that has been our tuition-
Love that model.
-so far, and, and along with their time commitment of the co-op model.
Next, we were invited to participate with, I believe, another ARPA funding recipient, the Teacher Training Fast Track Program through Neighbor Impact, so we were invited to be one of the first sites to participate with that program, so another piece of all of the legwork and the, the heart and the energy, the time, that goes into saying, how do we get at some of the fundamental issues that are barriers to childcare, staffing is like at the top of that list, and so, not only have we put capacity into just like hiring staff, training, supporting staff, but participating in some of these innovative projects, so we now are participating, participants in the Fast Track Program as well. we now are participating, participants in the Fast Track Program as well.
Got to imagine remote workers don't work too well in this situation.
No, no.
So it's truly getting that, that group together, that cohort of staff that are ready to keep the doors open.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Absolutely. And so then alongside all of the exciting expansion and opening this fall, we've also been able to expand our capacity to build our board, to revise some of our policy documents so that our mission and vision is really tight. And as we move forward and look forward to more replication of this model across the region, to really have that process down pretty pat so that we can just keep going. So we have meetings coming up now with partners, Sun River, with Christine Thompson from, or Thomas, I'm not, I can't remember, from the Chamber of Commerce, along with some partners at CUIC. And then we, we are now kind of coming back around to the circle to connect again with our partners and sisters who we've had ongoing conversations with to, to identify a site there as well.
That's the progress.
Well, so it'll be interesting to see how the, the business model evolves, right? I mean, that's what I'm thinking. Is there going to be sustainable, you know, revenue and activity and employees and, you know, parents wanting to be involved? You're saying there's a co-op model and a tuition part of it. So this is going to be a new, a new model and a new world.
Indeed, yeah. And so, I mean, these first years, really, this is, you know, we're learning. These first years are really about shoring that up, being able to tell the right story about our program. We know that it can't work for every single family, right? Which is why we want all of the models to support, to be supported and to partner with what everybody's doing. But to really hone in, we do think that there are a number of families and our families that we have, it does work for them. They want to be in the classroom with their kids and it's worth it for them to be able to only pay 350 a month. But we do have access to some great fundraisers and business coaches that we can work with to look at other, there aren't a lot of childcare programs that we know of that are, are doing what we're doing. But there are some maybe other private schools in the country that do what we do and looking at some sliding scale models, looking at other kind of ways of making sure that our commitment to keeping the cost affordable for families is still there. So it may mean playing with the model a little bit, but the value, I think, we're really committed to.
I think it's so important. I know in elementary schools, we were allowed as parents to work in the classroom. Now, it was public, so it didn't take any, you know, it was just being there and, you know, giving the teacher a couple of extra hands. So I thought it was great. So tomorrow I have a meeting with Sun River and it's Christine Thomas, the Sun River Director. Okay, so it's great. So you're meeting with her.
With her next week, yep.
Yeah, that's wonderful. And then sisters too. So I so appreciate, and I would think that a lot in the community would really appreciate the affordability and yet the opportunity to be there. And I would think employers would be rather flexible about it. So it's, it seems like you guys are on a winning formula.
I think so.
Yes.
Thank you for the, thank you for the launch.
Well, good to see you. And yeah, I mean, it's, it's an effort.
Thank you so much for, for proving out this really innovative model. That, that is, you know, it's, it's not the silver bullet for everything, but it is, it's a really exciting piece of the whole picture of how we're going to dig our way out of this childcare desert.
Yes, great.
Here we go.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. And sorry it took a bit longer than the agenda, but we, we try really hard to stay on time.
And another note for ARPA grants, I'm supportive of trying to have a discussion about secure residential treatment facility investment. You know, I've contacted, and there's a lot of moving parts in that and they're waiting for Measure 110. But Janice, I know is up to speed and Rick Trelevan of Crook and Jefferson County Best Care, looking at putting a facility possibly in Redmond. So I'm just letting my fellow Commissioners know that that may come around for discussion for, you know, some of those last unallocated ARPA dollars. Just to add it to the queue.
Well, and the really wonderful news was Friends of the Children was hoping to ask for more money for a program in Lapine. And then I don't know if you're aware, but I think they received like 1.4 million here in the program. So really nice, amazing funding for that program. So hopefully they can do more in, with the Lapine schools that they hadn't been in there yet.
With, with the prospect of that additional ARPA request coming in, I'm wondering if we can sort of pause on consideration of additional applications for a little while to let some of these final ideas, you know, all come in and so we can actually consider, you know, give them all fair consideration because there's, there's very little funding left. And if we kind of just keep considering things as they come in, you know, one at a time, then I worry that there might be things that, that, that don't get to us in time. I mean, we, we, we saw a very large request just, I, I haven't had a chance to fully digest it yet, but I saw a very large request come into my box just yesterday. So, you know, that could, that could absorb everything we've got left if we don't sort of hold back for, for a little bit to, you know, to get a better sense of the whole package of, of what we, we have to consider. I also just wanted to ask, before we, we move to the next item, can we take a little, a short bio break? Because it looks like we're going to go well past 12 and I, I would, I would love to be able, to be able to fully concentrate on the topic.
Okay. We're going to take a short break.
Is there anything else?
Just, oh, Dan, to repeat, the ARPA projects have to be started by '24, finished by '26. Is that correct? Right. Or there's a problem with that funding? Okay. I just want to refresh the rules. Thank you.
Two minutes.
Thank you.
We're now on item number 15. Kyle, thank you so much.
Is my mic on?
Okay.
There we go.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Kyle Collins, Deschutes County Planning Division. I'm here to talk to you today about the Wildfire Adapted Communities Recommendation Report from the Department of Land Conservation and Development that came out a couple of weeks ago. So without further ado, I'll kind of jump right in here. Got a very, very brief presentation to, to key everything up. Some overview, this is all related to Senate Bill 762, the Comprehensive Statewide Wildfire Mitigation Bill, in addition to things like the statewide wildfire risk mapping, defensible space standards, building code standards. One of the pieces of that legislation required the Department of Land Conservation and Development to put together a recommendation report for any possible changes that they might deem fit in relation to land use codes and planning programs that might help with, with wildfire mitigation. All of those recommendations were put out in a draft report that DLCD made available on August 19th, so a couple of weeks ago. And ultimately, they put out that draft report to solicit any type of feedback from members of the public, including possibly yourselves as Deschutes County Commissioners, before formalizing a final report that's going to be submitted to the Oregon Legislature and what's described as the, the State Wildfire Programs Advisory Council at the very beginning of October of this year. All written feedback, I'll, I'll kind of emphasize this at the end again, but all feedback from members of the public has to be submitted by September 16th at midnight, effectively. That's the, the final deadline before they dive into finalizing a report and sending that off to the legislature. So the recommendations that DLCD put together were really grouped into, you can think of them as five broad channels. I'll go through each of those very generally. The first is related to community information and engagement. The second big channel is safe evacuation and firefighting response. The third is wildfire risk mitigation requirements for areas of new development, which is what I'll primarily focus on and what's called out mostly as a part of your memo today. The fourth area is recovery planning. And then finally, areas subject to natural hazards, which is actually one of the statewide planning goals, goal number seven. Within all of these channels, they provided two possible options for recommendations that might be made to land use programs. The first is regulatory approach, which would be based on formal rulemaking by the Land Conservation and Development Commission. LCDC is the primary ones that actually move forward with rulemaking should the legislature decide to, to actually implement any of these programs. Although they also offer up a, a second possible option for any of these programs, which would be based on voluntary compliance, and it would leave it up to individual jurisdictions on whether or not they want to undertake any of this. I'll point out that DLCD hasn't advocated for any of these specific approaches, whether the regulatory or the voluntary ones. These are just recommendations to be considered by these larger, the State Wildfire Programs Advisory Council and the legislature. And thus, because there are no specific advocated positions, it's very difficult for staff to say exactly what might fall out to Deschutes County residents if anything is implemented. We can really only provide general comments and predictions at this, at this point because we don't know exactly what might come of all these, these recommendations. And with that, I'll actually launch into what each of the recommendations are unless there are any questions at this, at this point.
Okay. Thank you, Kyle.
Of course. So you'll see a table in your memo that's going to dive into these in much greater detail, some actual programs that might come out of these. But for the purposes of this presentation, I'm just going to very generally summarize what these fall into. So the first recommendation that DLCD put forward is that cities and counties should assess, assess their transportation networks for safe evacuation and firefighting response. This is, as it sounds like, literally looking at the road networks jurisdiction wide and determining if there are areas of high risk that might need improvements in order to provide safe access for firefighting personnel. That might be done as a part of something like our Transportation System Plan, which is the county-wide plan that looks at all the road classifications and the general maintenance standards for, for roads countywide. So that's primarily what this is focused on. Doesn't really deal in any other kind of land use area planning. It's, it's just associated with the transportation network. The second broad recommendation is that cities and counties should review and amend their local land use codes for any new development associated with safe access for firefighting response. This is primarily if you think of, if an applicant were to come forward with a new subdivision or a partition application, they want to build 10 lots or 20 lots in some area of the county, this would require an additional review of road access to that divided property or potentially divided property, determining what safe access is based on possibly new standards from DLCD, and then determining what standards need to be put in place in order to, to actually meet a subdivision requirement. So right now, this is something that's, it is reviewed as a part of our subdivision standards, but this might increase those standards up to a level that we're not currently meeting. Third broad recommendation that DLCD put forward is cities and counties reviewing and amending their comprehensive plan policies and land use codes to implement certain wildfire risk mitigation requirements for any new development. So again, this is talking about new subdivisions, new partitions, things of that nature. Senate Bill 762 is already going to require certain types of defensible space and home hardening standards for new development. This would likely be an additional layer on top of that that might deal with the entirety of a subdivision rather than a parcel-by-parcel basis. So some of the things that they've offered up are not only do individual properties potentially have to meet defensible space standards, but maybe there are additional defensible space standards around the entirety of a community. To point out a local example, you can think of something like the Westside Transx Zone and the standards for wildfire mitigation that are put in place there. And that's in some ways a formal example that's already in place that DLCD was, was thinking of in terms of what could possibly come out of this. Another possible standard that comes out of this might be related to the clustering of structures in new subdivisions and developments. So if it's, let's say, a 50-acre property that's being proposed for development, certain areas are lower risk than other areas, there might be a requirement that structures be actually clustered within the lowest risk possibility to the extent possible. Again, these are all hypotheticals. I don't know that any of this is actually going to come out, but those are the types of ideas based on discussions when they're putting together these recommendations that might come up. I'll also point out right here that DLCD pointed out a secondary piece that I've actually collapsed into this recommendation. They called out six formal recommendations. I'm only going to talk about five. And the reason I've collapsed that sixth one into this is because it deals with our natural hazard mitigation planning for individual jurisdictions, which is predominantly how all of this would be implemented most likely. So DLCD, for that final recommendation, would provide technical expertise to help all jurisdictions update their natural hazard mitigation plans. And then that ultimately would feed into our comprehensive plan and help implement in these policies that came into place. So it's really one side, two sides of the same coin, so to speak. The fourth broad recommendation that DLCD put forward is to provide support for cities and counties in post disaster recovery, specifically related to planning services. A lot of this was born of the Labor Day fires of 2020. There was a lot of communities that had significant challenges, starting to get recovery efforts underway just because their planning departments and community development departments were swamped by the number of applications and the sheer amount of work. So this is an attempt to both do some pre-planning work for all communities to ensure they have a, an actual program in place to facilitate that recovery effort. But also, if a fire were to affect a particular community, DLCD would provide additional support at the time that recovery efforts came underway. And then the final recommendation, number five, is DLCD would provide support to cities and counties and any other special districts related to planning for the coordination of community wildfire protection plans and their natural hazard mitigation planning processes. So I briefly touched on this a second ago, but this is related to the Community Wildfire Protection Plan piece in particular. We have a number of those throughout Deschutes County, and DLCD essentially said they could potentially provide additional tech, technical expertise in updating or creating those, those plans where they're not in place as we move forward to make sure that everyone is kind of on the same baseline. Whereas right now, it's a little bit of a piecemeal approach. Certain counties have a lot of these. Certain counties have a lot of these, and they update them very regularly. I would say Deschutes County is kind of at the top of the list in a lot of ways in keeping our CWPPs up to date. Other counties are much more behind the eight ball and would need a lot of additional assistance in order to get these up and running and to have them updated on the five-year update cycle that's required. So, one final piece that I'll touch on here is related to the state wildfire risk maps. One of the big things that DLCD calls out in this report and acknowledges is that a lot of these recommendations, if there were any changes to land use codes that are put in place, are going to be based on the comprehensive state wildfire risk map that was put in place. Because the Oregon Department of Forestry ultimately rescinded the risk map that was put out on June 30th of this year, and we don't have a timeline for when a new map is going to come out, there's no indication of how this might interplay in specific areas of Deschutes County in particular, but really statewide. They acknowledge that rather than trying to guess where properties might wind up on the state wildfire risk map, they would avoid putting any specific language in this recommendations report that specifically ties into the risk map, while also acknowledging that it's likely any rules that come into place are still going to have to be tied to the property-by-property, parcel-by-parcel risk classification that's put forward by the state whenever that is made available. So board considerations today, there's not a specific decision that you have to make. I've just come forward both to summarize the DLCD report and to gather any specific responses and direction from Deschutes County that you might want to make as commissioners. As I said, this draft report's been made available for anyone to comment. That's something you could do kind of as a formal legislative body, if you'd like to have something in, in one place, or the three of yourselves could create individual responses. Everything's done online, you have access to a link to do that yourselves, or staff could facilitate some specific responses if you'd like. As I said at the beginning, all of those responses have to be captured by September 16th at midnight, which is-
Which is next Friday.
Next Friday, correct.
Right.
And with that, I will open it up to any questions.
Well, I did have some people that live in Deschutes River Woods, this isn't for this document, but they said, Patty, you've got to get that, you've got to get access roads out of there in great shape by our road department, just so that if something happens today and not, you know, in the future, people can find their way out and it's not a, the road isn't a nightmare. So I have sent messages on to Chris Stoudes, and I'm hoping that something's getting done, because it's, you know, we're still not out of the woods.
Those, those concerns came up during the Baker Road interchange design discussions as well. That, you know, it's one thing, you know, it's, it can be difficult for people to get around Deschutes River Woods already, but then, if they can get themselves to the edge of Deschutes River Woods, there, there needs to be adequate capacity to get them out. So, I know, I know that there was substantial consideration for emergency egress going into the, the, the design for the new Baker Road interchange.
Okay. Are there any other comments?
Yeah, I'm just kind of processing it.
These, these seem relatively mild. I mean, I-
They are quite open-ended, and I, I think that's by design in, in some sense, and they, they acknowledge in the report that part of the reason there's no formal policies that are put in place here is that's ultimately something that's done at a rulemaking process. So rather than putting forward 1,000% effort and coming up with specific policies, once they go forward to some, the legislature and this, this programs advisory council, if they essentially say, we don't want to do any of that, then they've, they've wasted a bunch of effort. And so, I don't think we would know whether or not anything would come up from a, a formal, this would happen in this area for new subdivisions, things of that nature. None of that would be known until the legislature itself actually looks at this report and makes some determination of how they'd like to move forward.
I think that, you know, we do do a lot of good practices here already in Deschutes County. We've probably, we need to watch out for unfunded mandates is one of the concepts here. You know, it's, it's a great idea to sit there and say, oh yeah, just go pop through a bunch of evacuation roads, which is important, but who's going to pay for it, you know, if we don't have a structure or funding system for that? And, you know, private property rights, too. It's interesting when you're like, well, you can sit at a meeting and say, well, this is going to be good for the community and good for people, but it's somebody's private property to build a house and be able to do what they want. So, I just think a lot of balances and discussions throughout this whole thing. I'm excited that we're taking a look at it as a community, though. You know, we don't want to be stopped by wildfire activity as a community or a society. I mean, we really need to be resilient to this. We've always, you know, in my tenure in, in Deschutes County since the early 90s, we've really been aggressive at fuel reduction, defensible space, neighborhood, working together, you know, fire-free days, fire-wise communities. So I got to imagine that, yeah, we just keep doing what we're doing and-
I will point out, just to provide another bit of background here, so these recommendations were put together through a pretty long, since April of this year is when they started a, a big kind of statewide community engagement process. One of the big things they did as a part of that was wildfire programs kind of stakeholder committee, and I, I was one of the, the stakeholders involved at that committee. You're welcome to watch all those meetings, but it was a pretty diverse group of everyone from development interests and private property rights interests to fire protection agencies, planning, community development departments. And there was a lot of good discussions, and some of these recommendations ultimately spilled out from things that, you can think of them as good, good jurisdictions that were already doing a lot of the work on the ground that was not coming from the state. So places like Deschutes County, places like Ashland and, and parts of southern Oregon, those were, I think, a lot of where these recommendations were pulled from, so they actually could point to someplace and say, we, we have some examples of how this might work in practice.
But just think of Crooked River Ranch, though, and there are like about 6,000 people there, and they really only had one way out till a couple of years ago. Those, those people have, you know, they are so fortunate in today's world that there's more than one way out, because you just don't know. And if that one road was closed, then what would they have done?
But they're more than fortunate, because the need for alternative egress was identified in community wildfire protection plans, probably going back 15 years for, for that area. So it's, it's, it's not just, it's not just good luck that fell from the sky. It was, it was the work that was done by people in that community to, to look out for their future, which I, if, you know, I, just to pick up on, on some of the things that Kyle was just saying, the reason I, I think that some of this, you know, a, a number of these recommendations are pretty mild are because, you know, we've been thinking about some of this, you know, um, you know, coordinating community wildfire protection plans and natural hazard mitigation plans. I mean, we've been thinking about that for a while. You know, we've, we've been thinking about access and egress, again, as part of community wildfire protection plans for a long time. So I, um, that, that they're, uh, I'm, I'm not seeing really huge changes and impacts from these recommendations, because we've done a lot of, you know, as Commissioner DeBonne pointed out, we've done a lot of, we've done a lot of good work already. So we're, we're ready to, um, I, I, I think we're well poised to be able to respond to, to these recommendations.
Well, thanks for participating, and then, yeah, just having us kicking around here gives you a little bit of a mindset about what we're thinking or saying.
Yeah, absolutely. As I said, comments can be submitted by anyone until next Friday. If that's something you'd like me to, to assist with as staff, kind of being a part of this whole process, feel free to, to let me know.
Thank you, Kyle.
Of course.
Thank you for joining us. Okay, item 16, Fire Road Project. Yes?
Chair, I, I, I'll be back at, at 12:30. Eric's going to step in for me for the last couple of agenda items.
Okay.
We won't miss a beat.
Actually, I, I need to take a lunch break at like 12:30. Does that work?
Yeah, no, absolutely. I'm, I support getting back together this afternoon if we need to.
Right. But yeah, I, I have to take a lunch break at 12:30.
Okay. And these, I mean, it looked like lunch recess was planned after item 17, and then, you know, I would assume that these executive sections, we were already planning on doing after lunch.
Right. I'm just saying, looks like it's going to be 12:30 to 1:30. Okay, Cody, thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you. Good morning. And for the record, Cody Smith, county engineer, Deschutes County Road Department. Board, I'm here this morning to request your approval for the road department to submit a federal grant application under the Safe Streets and Roads for All program. I'm going to share my screen here and give you a little presentation on the program and on the project that we are proposing to submit an application for. And, all right, and you can, I'm assuming you can see my presentation there?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. So first, a little overview of the Safe Streets and Roads for All, or SS4A program. So this is a program that was established with the recently passed bipartisan infrastructure law. This is a $5 billion discretionary program that, that's supposed to be in place over the next five years for communities to do one of two things. One is prepare transportation safety action plans, which I will talk about a little bit more here in just a moment, and two, to implement projects that are identified in existing community transportation safety action plans. The, in the case of implementation project grants, the SS4A program provides up to 80% in federal funding for those projects. State DOTs, for example, ODOT here in Oregon, are, are not eligible for this program, but projects that occur on state highways are eligible, and partnership with state DOTs on, on these projects is strongly encouraged in the, the program guidance. So Transportation Safety Action Plan, or TSAP for short, a TSAP evaluates transportation-related crash trends based on crash data for a given period of time, and identifies a broad range of recommended treatments, including projects, policies, programs, both engineering solutions and non-engineering solutions to reduce and eliminate crashes on a transportation network. We, Deschutes County, and through the Deschutes County Road Department, we prepared a, the Deschutes County TSAP in 2019 with a grant that we had received from ODOT a couple of years prior to 2019. The Deschutes County TSAP includes not just unincorporated Deschutes County, but it also includes the cities of Redmond, Sisters, and Lapine. And when we, we, when we prepared our TSAP, the Bend NPO also prepared, the Bend NPO TSAP as well, using a similar grant, and it was prepared by the same consultant. So that, really, our, our TSAP was prepared in unison with the Bend NPO's TSAP, really to, to coordinate, synchronize those documents for, for the entire county. So in, in the Deschutes County TSAP, among many things, it, it identified, there was a portion of the TSAP that identified the top, the top sites on our transportation system that, that were safety improvements were warranted. The, the scoring for this, this ranking is, is based on the annualized equivalent property damage only. So looking at the crashes that, that occurred at a given site, a point value system is basically implemented where, where a property damage-only type crash would, would be one point, a non incapacitating injury crash would be worth 10 points, and a fatal or serious, or incapacitating injury crash would be worth 100 points. And then, and then those, those scores over that period were annualized to basically give a, give a annual score. So in our, in our top sites in Deschutes County, the US, the intersection of US 20 and Fryrare Road was ranked number three. So meanwhile, out of the other top 10 sites that are throughout the county, US 20 at Fryrare, Fryrare Road's the only site in that top 10 list where a project has not yet been completed or initiated since the TSAP was, was prepared back in 2019. So top of the list on, on those top sites was the US 20 Ward-Hamby intersection, which ODOT, in conjunction with Deschutes County, recently completed the, the new roundabout project. US 97 at Van de Vert was, was ranked second in this scoring. ODOT's recently completed a project at that location. Then third on the list is US 20 and Fryrare Road, where no project yet has been implemented and no, no funding source for a project has, has yet been identified until this, this program came out. So a little more on the, the history of the US 20 and Fryrare Road intersection. So for our TSAP, the study, the five-year study period was the years 2012 through 2016. That was the most readily available crash information that was available in, in 2018 and into 2019 when the TSAP was prepared. During that period, there were, there was recorded history for two fatal or incapacitating injury crashes, four non-incapacitating injury crashes, eight property damage-only crashes, for a total of 14 crashes during that study period. If we're looking at the most recent available information for, for the most recent five-year period, that would be the, the period between 2016 and 2020. And I'll, I'll note right here that, that crash, recorded crash data for calendar year 2021 or for 2022 to date is, is presently not available to us. That, that information is made available through DMV, and, and right now, the, the most recent crash information we have available is through calendar year 2020. But anyway, so during that, that most recent five-year period, there was one, one recorded, reported fatal or incapacitating, incapacitating injury crash, six non-incapacitating injury crashes, eight property damage-only crashes, for a total of 15 crashes, right, all influenced by the intersection of Fryrare Road and US 20. So with that, the, the proposed project under this, this application that the road department intends to submit would include construction of a new left turn lane for eastbound US 20 at Fryrare Road. It would include realignment of Fryrare Road at the intersection to eliminate the, the skew that presently exists there. It would include elimination of the intersection to reduce or eliminate nighttime crashes. It would include improvements to the right turn D cell lane for westbound US 20 at the intersection, and would also include improvements and upgrades to the traffic control devices around the intersection on, on both Highway 20 and Fryrare Road. This is, these next two slides is, is just kind of a concept drawing that ODOT prepared. County staff were presently refining this, this concept drawing right now for what will be included with our, our application that we intend to submit next week. But, but this is, this is looking at the, basically the west side of the intersection, showing that new left turn lane, showing that realignment of Fryrare Road. Moving on to the next slide, still showing the intersection, showing more of the east side of the intersection there along Highway 20, noting at least the improvements to the right turn D cell lane. Not, not, not a, a lot of information given in these drawings right now, but like I said, we, road department staff are, are refining ODOT's concept maps that they had prepared a few years ago for this project. In terms of budget for the project, our, the total project estimate that, that we've come up with for this project is, is $6.2 million. So with that, the SS4A program, we'd be asking for 80%, the, the maximum funding available under the program for this project. So the federal request would be 4.9 million. That would put the county share of the project at 20% or 1.2 million, which we would anticipate if, if our- which we would anticipate if, if our, if our grant application was successful, we'd be budgeting for that $1.2 million share in fiscal years 24 and 25. Just a couple final notes here. The US 20 Fryrare Road project has been proposed by both the road department and ODOT for inclusion in the, the transportation system plan update that we're, that we're presently engaged in right now. With, with the road department's proposal for the, for the draft TSAP, we had anticipated the county's share of the project being $2.5 million. So, so if this grant, if we were successful in obtaining this grant, road department staff are anticipating that the county's share in that project would actually go down. ODOT Region 4 has made several attempts unsuccessfully to secure funding for this project through internal state programs, as well as some federal programs. If our SS4A application is successful, the intent is that the project would be delivered by ODOT under agreement with the county. ODOT, ODOT is geared up for delivery of federal aid projects. It's, it's, it's a much more difficult task for us, the county, to deliver those, especially in terms of transportation projects. ODOT has provided a letter of support for the project and will be providing a little more comprehensive memo of understanding that'll accompany our, that would accompany our application. And finally, the SS4A applications are due to the US Department of Transportation next Thursday, September 15th. With that, I will stop sharing my screen there and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Cody. Actually, the turn coming, you know, going westbound is pretty well identified now, but of course, that's probably not where the problems are. The problems are probably the eastbound turn, so, you know, but it's 6.1, 2 million? 6.1, yeah, 2 million. And we have to do a 20% contingency?
Yeah, presently, in our, in our proposed budget for the project, we're showing a 20%, 20% contingency. That's, that's pretty common, especially when we're asking for federal funds for a project.
Okay.
Well, it's good to see those other projects that have been completed on the TSP and that the TSP has been in place for a little while, so we're not having to step backwards to even make a plan. And it's great to see this is the third project down. So it's really got a good justification for pulling this one up and asking for money.
But it'll still take a couple of years if we do get it, 24, 25?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, we submit the applica, we would submit the application next week. I, I, it'll be a year before we hear what the, what the selection are for these. And then, yeah, there's gonna be some time to get the funding in place and get the project designed before we're ultimately constructing it. I wouldn't foresee the, the project being under construction for another, at least two years, probably three or four years.
Takes a year for them to determine? Wow.
This is a new program, so they really haven't, I haven't seen any kind of schedule they put out for when they're gonna make decisions. But just, just based on our experience with other federal programs, yeah, usually, usually it takes some time.
Okay, well, I'm glad to know we're, yeah, we're going down the list.
Cody, I was tracking a little while back, trying to secure letters of support from our congressional delegation. Is that, are we all set on that front at this point? Or should commissioners still be trying to reach out to members of our congressional delegation on, to try to secure letters of support for our proposal?
That's a question I would have to ask Chris Doty, and I'd have him get back with commissioners individually on this.
Okay. Happy, happy to help if we need to continue to track letters down.
Great, great, well, I'll be happy to have this fixed.
Do you drive it every day?
No, not that, not from, not going that way. I don't have to make that left-hand turn, and I would not want to have to make that left-hand turn. So, yeah, it's on a curve, it's really, yes.
Commissioners, if I could butt in for one second?
There we go.
Yes.
We've received any letters of support yet from our congressional delegation. So, another, another poke to your contacts there would be great.
They haven't done it? Because I, okay, I'll, I'll send Maggie a message then. That's too bad.
Yeah, it sounded like they were on it. Our senators' offices were on it, but I'll, I'll double-check with them.
Okay, I'll, I'll double-check my inbox, but I don't believe, I at least actually need that yet.
Thank you.
Check your inboxed, oh, could've earned it. All right, do we have a motion?
I'll move approval of road department's middle of SS4A grant application for the Fryrare Road project.
And I will second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair delightfully votes yes. So, okay, thank you, Cody.
Thank you.
Okay, our last item this morning is item number 17, which was added on. I believe Ashley may be available?
You actually have item 17, and then I put 17A on your, in front of your chair there, which is a kind of related, Ashley's on that as well.
Okay. Ashley, there you are in your car.
Mobile office.
Hello. I have my kiddo with me, we're on our way to an appointment, so we're safely pulled over. So I apologize for doing this in my car, but you get me in my car. Thank you so much for your time, you guys have had quite the morning. So I will do my best to keep this brief, and I know that Chair Adair has a 12:30. So, I would love for your permission to apply for the Victims, or the Violence Against Women Act funding. This is intended to build capacity in our criminal justice system for services specifically for victims of crime. What we would be doing with this application is we would be co-locating a victim advocate with our law enforcement partners. Doing this would allow us not only to provide in-service advocacy services in some of our more rural areas, as we'd be partnering mainly with Deschutes County Sheriff's Office to have somebody stationed out in Lapine, and Redmond Police Department to have somebody stationed out in Redmond. So it'd be doing, getting more of that timely in-person services, and we'd be providing it more upfront. So during the investigative stages, this is federal funding, and this federal funding really wants us to work with providing safety services to victims specifically around protective orders and violations of those protective orders. And so that's what this advocate would specifically be targeting.
Ashley, you do that so well.
You're doing real good.
A woman with practice, right? Yes.
I'm so sorry.
No, don't, no, I, I used to have to take my youngest son with me, and it's always, it's always, he was always so good, and then he'd get in the car and make all this noise, and I'd go like, what are you doing?
You guys should have seen him, like, he's been an angel. And then I'm like, and of course, here we go. But that's okay, he's, he's contributing his portion.
That's very good, no, motherhood's so important, thank you for being such a great mom.
What I would say is, in terms of fiscal impacts, so this is a three-year grant, it would fully fund the advocate for the duration of the three years. There's also a portion of this grant in which we are partnering with Saving Grace, which you guys know is our local nonprofit domestic violence, sexual assault shelter and service provider. Trish Meyer is the Assistant Executive Director. She is actually going to be leading a best practice sexual assault case review with our sexual assault response team. So there will be some funding that will funnel through Victims Assistance to Saving Grace, specifically to leave that process. Some funding, some funding would be specifically for training. And then, the majority of the funding, as Holly presented and so many of us are experiencing, is gonna be funneling directly to the FTE. There is a 25% match requirement. I am currently working with a private foundation who is expressing interest in providing the, in providing, what do you need, baby? In providing the match. So hopefully, there would be no out-of-pocket expense for the county. However, I will be 1,000% transparent at the time we are hopefully granted the grant. So we know that upfront if there's any match requirement. If, say I am not able to get the foundation to do the 25% match, it would be $25,000 over four fiscal years, is what the match requirement would be for this grant. And the reason I say four fiscal years is this, the, the years are different. So our fiscal years, this will actually cover four fiscal years for the county, and it's three years for the federal grant. I'm sure you guys are very familiar, but just recapping.
Great, we do have the letter on our desk that you've signed regarding the Roundhouse Foundation private donation. So thank you for that, Ashley.
That's the second item.
Right.
That's a separate item.
Right.
So, yeah, and this was talked about at the Public Safety Coordinating Council yesterday in support of everybody that attended that meeting. It wasn't, it was about, probably about half or a little bit more than half of the folks. So there's a quorum, but it wasn't everybody. But this was supported by a vote at our Public Safety Coordinating Council yesterday.
Great.
Sounds like a great project. I, you know, the, the uncertainty of the matches, you know, it, you know, it's a concern, but, you know, to have these, to have these grant funds available to do this incredibly important work, you know, that's, that's a risk that I, I think we should be willing to take. And, and, you know, if the county needs to provide that 25% match, we, we can figure it out.
Is there a motion?
I'll move approval of board to apply for this Violence Against Women's Act grant funding.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
And then the second thing you have is a memo in which you guys are all, I mean, we've all been familiar with the violence that has taken place in our community, in which we have so many individuals who are impacted. And so, a foundation was familiar with the work that Victims Assistance was doing in Deschutes County and reached out, asking... Can you give mommy one minute, please? Asking how they can support. I anticipate, or at least the goal of their fundraising efforts is to funnel approximately $115,000 to Victims Assistance, specifically for the use of assisting the community in feeling safe and recovering from our, from the violence that has taken place in our community. I've briefly outlined the proposal for how that would be spent. Right now, they have a guaranteed $25,000, but I anticipate seeing more come in. And so we just wanted to go through this process. I've met with Dave Doyle, and I also met with Dan Emerson. And so we needed to make sure we went through this process, it was approved, and we could do any sort of budgetary resolution to receive these funds and then get money out the door to support our community, given this crisis.
So this is kind of a incident response dollars, kind of one-time dollars?
Correct.
And responding to an urgent need in our community that, that, you know, maybe people could have predicted that this was going to happen, but, you know, nonetheless, you know, extremely surprising and terrorizing for, for so many. Yeah, I, I very much appreciate the Roundhouse Foundation's efforts to raise private philanthropic resources to respond to this, this incredibly important moment in, in time for our community.
So, what does assisting with an increase in law enforcement presence look like? I mean, I'm just thinking, what are, what are we gonna do here?
Yeah, so the, the one minor change to that proposal that you guys would see is we've actually teamed with our nonprofit community. So, the Fathers Group, the Latino Community Association, we've reached out to Out Central Oregon. And what we really wanted to do is make all populations, so all students feel safe during the welcome back to school and the transition back to school. So we'd actually be working with those nonprofits to provide presence, an increased presence at the school, specifically the Fathers Group, who have already have volunteers screened and trained through the school district, so they can be present. So law enforcement will be increasing their presence independently. We would be supporting the nonprofit presence to ensure that all students feel safe. We recognize that an increase in law enforcement presence doesn't necessarily make every student feel safe. And so that was our way of addressing some of the gaps in the proposal that the Roundhouse Foundation had identified. And so that would be that piece, and I'm happy to answer any other questions about the funding, the other funding that's outlined.
I would just note, if the board's inclined, we didn't have a, an agenda item cover sheet, but it would just be a motion to accept this Roundhouse Foundation private donation grant to the Victims Assistance Unit.
Okay, is there a motion?
I, I move that, I, I move board approval of acceptance of Roundhouse Foundation's donation to the Victim Assistance Program.
And I'll second it.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
Well, let's just celebrate, you know, welcoming and opening and, you know, supporting each other, making the relationships in the community, understanding public safety is good. We're here for each other, and, what was it, hearts or, yeah, love? Love's gonna help us, or, you were asking for hearts earlier.
Well, I went at hearts, yes, on something, yeah, we do need hearts. Love does make the world go round, isn't that what it's called, Ashley? Yes.
Love is the answer.
Yeah.
Yes, that's a good one.
One, one last question I did want to ask about this, Ashley. So this, this concept of, you know, monitoring social media, you know, for, for potential threats of harm, you know, that's, that will provide, I, I'm sure that will be effective to a degree, but I, I, I think a big piece of the value of that is just reassuring people that, you know, that someone's, someone's watching, someone's trying to, to track, you know, early detect, you know, potential risks or threats on, on social media. And how, like, how do you, how are you gonna communicate that out so that people feel that reassurance, you know, that somebody's watching and somebody's trying to identify these threats online?
Yeah, that's a, that's a double-edged sword. The many third-party companies that offer this service would caution against communicating about that. You don't want to then discourage people from publicly posting if they really are wanting to complete a threat. So, we would obviously defer and take their guidance on that.
Yeah.
Whatever company ends up accepting the RFP.
Okay, well, yeah, I'm, I'm sure there's a whole bunch of best practice around this, so I'm glad, glad to take the recommendations of experts.
Me too.
Okay, to the vote on the motion, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So, give him, tell him he did very well, and, you know, it could be, you made it. So thank you.
You made it.
Have a great, have a good day.
So, thank you, everybody.
There you go.
You made it, buddy, they said, they said you did great.
He did.
Thanks for working us in around your lunchtime.
Never, never easy, never dull.
No.
Okay, all right. So let us, let's see, let us adjourn now until, how about 1:35 for our executive session and other items.
So Stephanie, are we ready? Thank you so much. Let's reconvene the Board of County Commissioners meeting for September 7, 2022. Do we have any other items? Anybody?
Looks like Nick does.
Nick.
Thank you Chair. The other item that I have is it relates to the Board's interviews, or a couple of Commissioners interviews of the Audit Committee members. That occurred yesterday for the open seat. As you're aware, the Audit Committee has an open position for a public member. Commissioner Adair, Commissioner Chang, Eric Krupp, and I think Dave, did also you all participate? Is that right? Oh, this wasn't, okay. Oh, maybe it was David Givens. Excuse me, there he is, perfect. Conducted interviews with the four applicants. And so Dave, do you want to take it from here and just summarize who you interviewed and what the steps are? I wasn't aware that you were going to be here, which is great, I'm glad you are.
Sure, sure. There's Dick Givens, County Internal Auditor. So we have an open seat for filling up the term from June 30, 2024. And then yesterday Commissioner Adair, Commissioner Chang, Eric Krupp, and myself had two panels of interviews with four candidates, which were all great candidates. We had Eric Berlin, a Director of Pius Limited, it's a financing company, and we had Mark Knowles, a President of Zig, Lisa Young, a Senior Associate with Sensiba San Filippo, a CPA firm, and we had Joe Healy, the Controller for Sun River Owners Association. So Eric and I discussed after the interviews, the feedback that each of the panels had, and from that discussion, I'd say our top two candidates out of that was Joe Healy and Lisa Young. So they both had a lot of depth of background in municipal governments, they both had some accounting background, they had, you know, interest in controls, and they were very much interested in being part of the Audit Committee. So I'm looking for a motion from the Commission about appointing one of these applicants to complete the term of our open position.
It's a completion of the term?
Completion of a term.
How long does it go to then?
June 30, 2024.
Okay.
Good chunk of the term.
And I did provide Tony with a copy of the applicants too, so.
Yeah.
Applications. Any questions, or, I mean, I think you guys just needed to probably deliberate in terms of...
I did, I do personally know Joe Healy, and he actually started working at my husband's country club in Los Angeles and found major fraud, major, major, the woman went to jail. So, you know, from that experience, and then he came up, and he's been working at Sun River for six years, and yeah, he's, you know, anyway, I just know that he really, he's very good at his job. And I think the Sun River people are incredibly happy with him, and I know he's incredibly happy to have left Los Angeles. So, yeah, he saved the club a lot, they, you know, it's someone that wasn't taking vacations, you know, that's always, I think, one of the signs that, you know, as auditors, when you're looking somewhere, that, you know, it's really important that people take vacations, so someone else has to kind of pick up pieces. And she had a lot of trust in that community, and unfortunately, she embezzled a lot of money.
I thought both Joe and Lisa were excellent candidates for the Audit Committee and would be very happy to see either one of them serve. I might have a slight leaning towards Lisa just because of her very longstanding service in the community, and I really did appreciate her approach to the Audit Committee. I mean, she was the person we interviewed who got it, you know, right away, like, don't have to roll up your sleeves and do the audit work, you're providing guidance, you're asking, you know, important questions that help us understand the big picture. So those were just some of the things that I especially appreciated about her, about her, you know, her candidacy for this committee position. But like I said, I think Joe would be a great as well.
And I want to say that the other two candidates were outstanding too. I feel like we were really, really, I was fortunate, Eric, and Berlin and Mark Knowles. So, you know, I have to thank the community for caring enough to, you know, to apply and recognizing that public service is really appreciated.
Agreed.
Well, this is our Audit Committee, it's, you know, a voluntary operation, but it's a committee that has some authority on really looking at the, you know, efficiencies, the business flows, the, you know, risk and fraud possibilities, annual consolidated financial report, you know, it's really a great committee to understand the big picture about each dollar that throws, flows through to Shute County also, and, you know, other topics. So, yeah, I wasn't involved, I just looked at the resumes, it looks, I'm not in a spot to give a recommendation at the moment.
Do we need to do that today?
It would be good to have, you know, someone to move forward with an appointment letter or something like that, I mean, that's kind of where we are. You guys need to deliberate somehow and...
Oh, and I did not ask Joe to apply, he just, I saw his resume there, and I went like, oh my gosh! So I, you know, really knew three of the four candidates.
Oh, cool.
I believe that there is an Audit Committee meeting tomorrow?
On Thursday, yeah, Thursday, tomorrow, yeah. Won't be ready for that, because usually we go through a process of training them and getting them on board, and of course, your appointment letter has to be signed and all that stuff. They could attend as a private citizen.
Right, right.
Public meeting.
But, you know, it might be nice to let someone know before tomorrow, and the other members of the Audit Committee might be excited to know who's going to be joining them moving forward as well, so I, you know, I would be, I would be comfortable supporting either one of those two candidates, so. Again, I have a slight leaning towards Lisa, but, you know, if, if it's basically...
I'll flip a coin, get us some guidance.
Commissioner DeBonne is neutral, and it's just two of us who are responsible for this decision, you know, I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable going either way as well.
Well, I, between the two, I would, I would prefer Joe. Just, just because I know what he's personally done, and I've had excellent feedback from Sun River.
Well, with Commissioner Chang's statement there, then I'll make a motion to appoint Joe Healy to our committee.
Second.
Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair will just...
All right, thank you Commissioners.
Lookout Audit Committee, here we go. Thank you.
Oh, boy. So are we now to executive? Is there anything else for other items? No? Okay, so we need to go to executive session then?